All right, it is 2 o'clock. We do have a quorum. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Days. Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Bitch.
Present.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Present.
Councilmember Trachis. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, Madam Clerk, please continue with the comments.
Yes ma'am.
Madam Chair, from Kelly Bath. I implore the council to reject bills 220, 222, and 223, and instead continue with measures to protect the health and safety of county residents, particularly those most vulnerable to the virus. Countless medical and public health experts have continued to advocate that universal masking is effective at slowing the spread of COVID-19. And it is a method that is easy and cost-effective. It is a critical tool in keeping essential workers safe and represents only a minor inconvenience for the rest of us who can and must do our part to keep our neighbors, our elderly, and at-risk loved ones, and ourselves, safe. Lifting these public safety measures risks both health and economy. When businesses universally require masks, it provides a consistent approach to safety and an increased comfort level so that we can continue to go out into the community and patronize businesses and live our lives with some degree of normalcy. By lifting the mandate, businesses will not be able to enforce mask-wearing, which could result in fewer patrons willing to take the chance. For those who will continue to venture out maskless, it risks spread and an increase in cases, hindering our collective progress towards overcoming this. I'm quite certain the loudest voices you're hearing are against maintaining these safety measures in an effort to politicize public health. But please remember there are just as many, if not more of us, who are due to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. From Patty Shine. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I am assured you are considering lifting the mandate on wearing masks, and I strongly urge you to reject bills 220, 222, and 223. Why not continue the measures already in place to protect the citizens of the county? Our business is to protect themselves and protecting their patrons and their employees. I know I feel so protected when I'm shopping at my local grocery and see everyone else wearing masks and keeping their distance. It's the grocery that's implementing the guidelines that have been put in place by the Public Health Department, and everyone is in compliance. I'm a senior citizen, and as that establishes the fact that I am very much at risk, I could no longer visit the establishments that I do now. Why, when this is working, everyone feels safe, why would you lift the mandate? It doesn't make sense. Please consider not doing this. Please consider the problems you will create. My son has a business that really needs this mandate as it helps him and his employees stay safe. I live in Chesterfield, and everyone there has no problem wearing masks. If I were to go to a store where there were people who weren't practicing safety measures, I wouldn't return to that store. I hope you reject the bills that will lift the safety measures we all depend on. Thank you for listening to my request. And in advance, please forgive me if I mispronounce this last name. This is from Peggy Schmelzey. I hope I pronounced that right. Schmelzel, maybe? I am begging the county council to listen to medical experts regarding matters of public health issues. Thank you for your time and consideration. From Callaway Zuccarello. Yesterday, when I was in line at Schnucks and Ladue, the elder man in front of me looked sick and coughed frequently. I stood there, six feet away, grateful for the fact that everyone in line was wearing a mask. Then I walked away and decided to shop some more to be extra careful. If he has COVID, which seemed highly possible, think of all the people he could have infected had he not been wearing a mask. Science and health should drive our policies to protect our health, not politics. That's why I strongly urge the council to reject bills 220, 222, and 223. Two weeks ago, I drove through Nebraska where most people I saw were not wearing masks, including the people working at the convenience stores. It's no wonder that their COVID rates are escalating quickly. Health experts tell us this happens, and it's been proven. Why is this even a question at this point? Science and research from doctors and public health experts should drive our public health policy. I work with the Washington University School of Medicine, and the public health experts there and throughout the country agree on the importance of public masking and have proven that universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. Lifting public safety measures will, in fact, hurt our local economy. If St. Louis lifts the mask mandate, you can bet I'm not shopping anywhere near St. Louis County. I may even consider taking my family and leaving town for the rest of the year. Vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. From Dale Pesson. Please do not limit the government's authority to mandate face masks during this pandemic. Do I like wearing a mask? No. But would I prefer to get and/or spread a preventable disease? Absolutely. Why is it that a few selfish and self-centered people should be allowed to ignore science and safety? If we use common sense and work together, we can prevent the spread of this virus and get back to a normal life sooner rather than later, and hopefully with our families intact. Please stand behind mandates for masks. From Diane Bros. Hello, this is extremely important to me. I'm a senior citizen, and I also have health risks, including asthma and high blood pressure, which put me at higher risk for COVID-19. I have a parent who has dementia who lives in an assisted-living family facility. My sister had a transplant, so she is immunocompromised, which increases her risk of COVID-19 tremendously. I have many senior citizen friends who also have health risks. My three nieces are in middle school and high school and have started in-person schooling. Keeping all of my loved ones safe is very personal to me. Initially during this pandemic, I was afraid to leave my home because of my risk factors. Many people in the public weren't wearing masks, and it made me uncomfortable that I would contact, contract this virus. The science and expert epidemiologists like Dr. Fauci have firmly stated that proper mask-wearing is the main deterrent in protecting everyone from COVID-19. The county mandate of mask-wearing made me much more comfortable with being in public. Europe is already seeing a second wave of COVID, and according to the scientists, the United States will have a second wave too as the weather gets colder. I want my family and myself, as well as everyone, to stay safe and COVID-free by everyone continuing to wear masks in public. Please do not vote for ending public health and safety. I'm writing to ask you to reject bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. From Cynthia Pennington. Please don't endanger our health by refusing to allow mandatory mask-wearing, gathering limits, etc. It's a shame all people don't insist on wearing masks and keeping their distance from one another to protect themselves and others. But like the seatbelt mandate, sometimes common sense needs a strong nudge to get everyone to be safe. The malignant narcissism of our current president must not be allowed to spread to the citizens of our state. Thank you. From Barry Spiegel Glass, I believe I pronounced that correctly. I do not understand why you are taking away the public health official's duty and making it political. Our health is at stake, and you are playing doctor. Your duty, number one, is to protect the safety of your constituents. I cannot think of a more short-sighted way than to vote for bills 220, 222, and 223. Further, I do not understand the hesitancy of government officials in urging all Americans to wear a mask and social distance to get this virus not only under control but to stop it. What will it take to understand that this is an easy thing to do? It does not cost anything to protect your family, loved ones, and fellow human beings. This is not political, it's humane. Vote no. Thank you. From Cindy Hayman. I'm asking you to reject bills 220, 222, and 223. I'm immunocompromised, and I am highly aware of the importance of public masking. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. If public safety measures are lifted, it will hurt our local economy. I will not allow my family to continue to visit local businesses, and I know many others who feel the same. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population, our essential workers, unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. My daughter is a nurse, and this concerns me greatly. Masking is simple and effective at containing the spread of the virus, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. From Jeremiah Allen. I'm writing to urge you to accept the grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. This money will keep this important election a fair one, assisting those who would otherwise be unable to vote. Please accept it to ensure democracy continues in our nation. Thank you. From Valerie Miller. This is the first time I've written into county council. Please reject bills 220, 222, and 223. It is important for the council to continue with the measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents, of which I am one. I recently had a COVID scare. I live with my 91-year-old mother, and protecting her is paramount. If I contracted COVID, it would spell disaster for her. Please continue to protect the citizens of St. Louis County. Don't be short-sighted or bow to pressure from the anti-maskers. It would be a terrible mistake and result in more suffering and death. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of wearing masks. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented, perhaps, thousands of COVID-19 cases. I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. From Sally Lilly. We need to reject the bias 220, 222, and 223 as they are taking away the protection of our health authorities who are trying to keep us all safe and well. Masks are just a minor inconvenience, but help us and others stay healthy and well. I live in a retirement facility and respect all the rules we've had for the last six-plus months, and we have all stayed well. Lifting the mandate hurts all of us. Please do not pass these bills. Thank you. From Andy Van Cleef. Please do not repeal the mask mandate in St. Louis County. I was appalled to learn that this was under consideration. The mask mandate has lowered our case rate here in St. Louis County and made me feel personally much safer as I patronize businesses in the county. This is absolutely the wrong time to make such a change here as we enter the flu season. The mask mandate will protect the community from the possible ravages of COVID-19 and influenza circulating at the same time. It is my sense from talking with my neighbors and fellow citizens, the community buy-in and cooperation with the mask order is high, and we do not need more confusing messaging from a governmental entity. Please continue to keep us safe here in St. Louis County, and please vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. From Bill and Lisa Klein. The CDC made a mistake when it initially said no to using masks. To put the best light on it, they wanted to preserve scare... Assuming this means scarce resources for those with the most need. They knew that in surgery, the use of masks was not useless but critical. Infectious disease has been understood for a long time. Masks work. When they finally reversed their advice, and they did not apologize or explain, they just confused the issue. Other politicians exploited the confusion for their own benefit. Many were misled to believe that masks and physical distancing were political rather than scientific ideas. Let's stop this nonsense now in St. Louis County. All members of the council know how to spell science. They all studied it in school. This is not a political question. This is a question of life and death. Someone has to lead in public health declarations for the county. We elect the head of the county council to do this in consultation with medical experts in the field of public health. From Michelle Bunch. Please keep the mask mandate in place. Schools and sports activities have reopened. Please keep this one containment strategy in place so that we can all do one thing together to minimize the spread of COVID-19 while everyone returns to their pre-pandemic schedules. A mask is an easy thing to do to save lives and prevent future health issues down the road. We don't know the longer-term impact of having COVID-19, and even those who had minor or no symptoms may have lasting issues. We just don't know, and if we can prevent it, let's do that. Thank you.
Continuing with the council comments. From Sue McCool. I am a resident of District 7 in St. Louis County, and I am writing this morning to ask that you reject bills 220, 222, and 223. I am strongly in favor of county mask mandates and want these mandates to remain continuously in place until the threat of COVID is extinguished. Science has confirmed that COVID is transmitted in aerosol form, and a mask is a simple, effective way to stop or at least slow that transmission. By yielding to public pressure to allow mandates to expire, you will be ignoring that science and putting St. Louis County residents at greater risk. I am a health athletic senior and am doing my best to stay well. Even though I am healthy, my age puts me at greater risk. If mask mandates are allowed to expire, even though I will continue to mask up, I will be at much greater risk when I go from my home if I am exposed to those county residents who don't take the science seriously and choose not to wear a mask. Thank you for your consideration. Next comment is from Deanne Jockish. I strongly urge the council to reject bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are a horrendous politicization of public health. I appreciate the need to sustain our economy as I see businesses shutting their doors in my community. However, efforts need to be made to both support our businesses while also supporting public health. People cannot simply stick their heads in the sand on this issue. It is a real thing that I see firsthand every day, not just through a newscast. I don't believe this council has the expertise to dictate public health policy and should leave that to the world-class physicians, academics, and healthcare leaders of Missouri. Those health leaders that are not only world experts in their fields but also paying customers to the businesses that you are concerned with protecting. What does it say to those leaders that their expertise is ignored? Why stick around as they are as plenty... I stick around as there are plenty of states that will appreciate their voice. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. Simply take a moment and watch someone preparing or serving food at your local restaurant. Look at the restroom where they are expected to wash their hands. The state of cleanliness prior to COVID was not ideal, so these simple measures add a layer of protection that I don't believe the average citizen can be relied upon to manage themselves. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. This is not a hard thing. Anyone that scoffs at simply putting on a mask and taking a little extra care with their personal space and hygiene, which they should have been doing anyway, simply does not understand how infectious disease works and surely should not be dictating me or my family's safety. The facts are the facts, and the world is not flat. Lifting public safety measures will, in fact, hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and I fear that without the government requiring safety precaution, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will not allow my family to continue to visit local businesses, and I suspect others will do the same. A Walmart without masks is just flirting with disaster. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. Next comment is from Helen Jacobs. I live and work in St. Louis County. I am a dentist, and I'm working very hard to keep my assistants, patients, and myself safe from the threat of COVID-19. COVID-19 is on the rise in Missouri, and repealing mask mandates and occupancy limits will only increase the cases and most likely deaths. I urge you to maintain the current mandates for masks and occupancy limits to help keep us as safe as possible from COVID-19. Thank you. Next comment is from Jennifer Brunworth. I write to you as a concerned citizen and physician. Please be aware that our mask mandate is responsible for the difference between a positivity rate of 14% in Missouri and a 4.4% in St. Louis County. No one likes wearing masks or even being told what to do, but this is a sacrifice that we must make to proceed with our normal activities. We must wear the masks to keep our children in school, keep our stores open, and keep our hospitals manageable. Unfortunately, there is much that remains unknown about SARS-CoV-2, but we do have very clear evidence that masks are effective in diminishing transmission. We must put politics aside for a moment and listen to our public health experts on this matter. Ultimately, we all have the same desire to move past this pandemic, and masks are undoubtedly the quickest way to achieve this goal. Next comment is from Tracy Wolfmeyer. Ursuline Academy has failed our girls as it relates to cheer. How can UA say no to stunting or chanting when other schools are? Why is it okay for their peers at UA and competitive schools alike compete but they cannot stunt or chant? How is that not confusing? How is that okay? Ursuline has proven the use case that they can manage against COVID-19 in the classroom and outside the classroom. We see this proof every day in our Facebook, Instagram feeds of UA girls, like many other schools, celebrating being back to school while managing against COVID protocols well and who are playing sports. We see field hockey, soccer, and other competitive teams at UA playing again on these public social media channels, like other schools who are playing football, hockey, and are cheering, like CBC, Kirkwood, Francis Howell, and more. But where is UA cheer? Why is it absent? The inconsistency in athletic rules and restrictions is beyond ridiculous and sends mixed signals and the wrong message to our girls. What message does you want to send to these girls who've been forgotten? Is cheer not important? Are the girls not important? The inconsistency needs to be addressed like restrictions on behalf of these girls. Next comment is from Jennifer Weston. I write to you today in support of bills 220, 222, and 223. I really don't understand why any of you would be against the checks and balances that these bills provide. What on earth is wrong with expecting oversight of our leaders? Why would any of you be against that? What are you afraid of? And by the way, this has nothing to do with masks, despite some of you trying to make it appear that way. Additionally, I'm disgusted at Lisa Clancy's comments referring to those who support these bills as privileged and racist. That tactic is getting old and is quite offensive. Me wanting my kids to be able to learn in the classroom and play sports to keep them physically and mentally healthy, as well as me wanting to support and patronize local restaurants and businesses, does not make me privileged or racist. It makes me a loving mom and a supportive community member. It doesn't take an advanced degree to figure out the difference. Next comment is from Donald Score. As a physician, I cannot conceive how anyone can reject the idea of wearing a mask to protect both themselves and others. Quit playing politics, follow the science, and stay healthy. Next comment is from Susan Block. I support Sam Page's ability to make good executive decisions. He has kept us all safe. Please don't put unnecessary barriers to his leadership. Put safety over politics. Thanks. Next comment is from Lisa Schlushing. I wrote earlier to express strong hope that you will vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. I'm writing today as I'm not certain you will get that email on the day of the vote. COVID is a deadly disease with lasting effects, many of which are only now coming to our attention for study and remediation. Wearing face masks is a simple way to keep more of us safe. We cannot know where the virus, the unknownly spread, will go into homes with vulnerable children or adults. We follow other simple rules to keep ourselves and others safe. We obey traffic signs as drivers or pedestrians. We buckle our seatbelts. We wear shoes and shirts in restaurants. Wearing a mask is a similar and effective remedy to contain the virus. Please keep us safer by voting no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. Next comment is from Fran Manis. I am a county resident who urges you not to pass bills 220, 222, and 223. It would be terrible for all of our health and safety. Listen to the scientists and doctors who all agree that the best way to fight this off pandemic is by wearing masks. I am at high risk of contracting the virus since I have an immunosuppressed condition. This means that my body can't fight off infections or viruses as well as a person with a fully functioning immune system. I have not been in a grocery store, restaurant, or just about anywhere in over seven months. Actually, I have been very few places except my home. Those of us in this situation know that an encounter with someone infected and not wearing a mask could have terrible consequences. It's a scary thought, and I think about it constantly. All of our lives have been affected by COVID-19, and sadly, we don't know when it will end. What has helped lower the numbers of affected people is in the countries where they have mandated masks and observed social distancing. Please consider the health of all of us and vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. Next comment is from Tina Schulte. Please keep all public health and safety orders in place for at least six more months. Several of our family members have jobs which bring them in close proximity to the general public for 50-plus hours a week. To remove the safety orders would greatly increase their exposure to the COVID-19 virus. As a result, that would increase the risk to other family members who are at high risk. To even consider not mandating the use of masks is totally reckless and unforgiving. Several states in the Midwest are currently facing an increase of COVID-19 cases as a result of opening up. Now is not the time for St. Louis County to follow this terrible, deadly trend. Please be smart about this and use your best judgment based on the scientific information. Thank you. Next comment is from Arthur Lieber. Yes, it's a question of public safety, the common good, and individual liberties. Sometimes the balance tilts in one direction, other times in the opposite direction. With over 230,000 American deaths due to COVID-19, let's be wise and cautious. Let's keep the mask mandate. By the way, they are easier to wear as the weather gets colder. Next comment is from Kelly Larson. I urge you to vote no on the bill to declare a supermajority to apply a county public emergency. To pass this bill and take away the mask mandate is insane. It is the only reason I step away from my home right now. It is the only reason I feel a very little bit okay about my grandchildren returning to school next week. It is the only way to keep people safe. All infectious disease doctors say if 95% of people... All infectious disease doctors say if 95% of people would wear a mask, this virus would be under control. And don't give the standard line, "Well, it should be up to the people, people will do the right thing." Statistics show not enough people have done the right thing. How dare some of you even consider taking that safety precaution away from the public? You should be ashamed and definitely voted out of office for even contemplating voting yes to this bill. Next comment is from Mark Helbig. Whoever ultimately receives the power when it comes to a mask mandate, please leave the requirement to wear a mask as it is. A study of the 1918 pandemic indicates a dangerous and more deadly second wave occurred when people let their guard down and refused to wear masks around the same time of year as it is currently, fall of 1918. Epidemiologists have stated, quote, "Wearing a mask and social distancing are more important in the prevention of disease than even a vaccine," end quote. It is not too much to ask a person to wear a mask indoors or outdoors in crowds. It is the simplest and easiest thing we can all do for our fellow citizens and for ourselves and families. Next comment is from Heather Heck. I am concerned about lifting of the mask mandate. The spread of COVID is a deathly risk to my family that I do not take lightly. I understand people want to live their normal life. The mask mandate is lifted, more people will be infected, and more people will die. I would like to feel my community and keeping a mask mandate would do this. I have the right to feel safe.
Madam Chair, this is from Steve Lawler. I'm writing to show my support for the defeat of 220, 222, and 223. As a pastor and the spouse of a virologist, I've been grateful that we have in place a team of people in the county health department who are making decisions that are benefit, for the benefit of our community. Add to this the fact that our county executive, I think it is fair to say, are especially fortunate to have been led so well through this difficult time. Implementing 220, 222, and 223 is an unnecessary step in the decision-making process and leaves the door open to greater pressure from special interest groups who have reasons other than community health to have the protections necessary to limit the impact of COVID-19. I hope that you will vote no on 220, 222, and 223. Thank you for your consideration. This is from Luis Lonsbury. Vote to continue masks and other laws. I and my family have been exposed, staying home, but the boys missing soccer and college testing. Last summer, there was a spike which had the school have classes online. Now, they are working to have them in school. If the mask requirement is not passed, the kids will continue to be at home. Think of our children and older people. This is from Rabbi Mark L. Shook. The current attempt by some of you to wrestle the management of our pandemic crisis by removing authority from the health department and the county executive is an act of craven indifference. If the members of my family are well so far, it is because we have followed in every respect the guidelines of the Department of Health and not the unscientific whining of selfish politicians. Those who propose restrictions on the Department of Health see their opposition to the mandated health measures as being popular for a certain segment of voters. But this attempt will actually kill people. Are council members ready to staff intensive care units when they become overwhelmed by your indifference to pain and suffering? In March and April, as a member of the clergy, I have had to preside over too many socially-distanced funerals of COVID-19 victims. Now that we know how to prevent the spread and lower the curve, deaths that occur because of our unwillingness to follow health guidelines are now our fault. I urge you all to defeat these measures and return to scientifically-based rules. This is from John Pruitt. I was writing to the city council to advise that as a retail worker that comes into contact with thousands of people every day, I would feel safer if the mask mandate was kept until a vaccine is widely accessible to the public. I believe that it would keep the city a lot safer and healthier. So masks should be mandated until a vaccine is widely accessible. This is from Leatris Politeika or Politika. Please keep mask mandates in place. Masks are kind. Masks are problem-solving. Masks are a smart thing to do. Also, keep lower capacity in businesses. It just makes sense to limit our exposure to this disease. The county executive needs the authority for flexible changes as we progress. This is from Judith Mann to the council. Health experts have made it very clear that our best tools for combating the spread of the coronavirus are masking and social distancing. I do not support allowing the council to overrule mask and capacity mandates since these will be essential ways for our county to fight against the spread of the virus, thus producing infection and deaths, and allowing us to eventually return to our normal activities and an active economy. Please, do not vote to give the council the authority to override these essential mandates. This is from Darren Scotty. We urge you to support and pass bills 220, 222, and 223. These checks and balances are what is needed in this dictatorship that has fallen upon us. We want our children back in the classroom and our business open. The restrictions that were put in place to flatten the curve so that our hospitals would not be overrun was successful. I fail to see Ms. Clancy's divisive comments are improving St. Louis County. I speak for many constituents that are highly educated and insulted by her consistently condescending tone. We are not racist, privileged, mask-wear, excuse me, privileged, mask-fearing people that want people to die. I wear a mask. I am most certainly not a racist. If expecting my child to be educated by the public school system is being privileged, I'd like to hear your reasoning behind that. I'm unclear what goals you're aiming to accomplish by your inflammatory remarks. I am just thankful I don't live in your district and have a representative that doesn't treat the public that voted them into office the way you treat yours. Your comments that it is coming from Rockwood parents is disturbing and uncalled for. We also do not find it appropriate the chair be held by county member Clancy when her brother serves on Sam Page, Sam Page's election team. This is from Val, Valerie Terry. I urge you to reject bills 220, 222, and 223. Follow the science, not those who deny science. It has been shown mask-wearing helps prevent the spread of COVID, so use science and vote against bills 220, 222, and 223. This is from Melissa Foss or Foss. COVID has upended our lives in countless ways. There is unbelievable amounts of uncertainty that still stretches before us. There is so much we don't know. What we do know is masks save lives by slowing the spread of COVID. I'm a teacher who must prepare to head back into spaces with students. The only way I will be able to do that safely, physically and mentally, will be with masking. As we approach the colder months, it is more important now than ever. Please look at science and data. We know masks work. This is from Susan Brown. I urge the council to continue with measures to protect St. Louis County residents. I strongly urge the council to reject bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are a true politicization of public health policies. When I see the sign at the grocery store that no one can enter without wearing a mask, I feel secure, remembering at the start of the pandemic, we didn't know what to do. Now, we do. We can protect ourselves and others by wearing a mask. I think that it is selfish of those who don't want to wear a mask. They are taking chances on both their lives and mine. I chose to protect myself and those I come into contact with. COVID cases are up and down. We don't know what the cooler weather will bring. As a senior citizen, I feel very vulnerable, and that mask-wearing is so easy to do. I am not talking about a statewide policy, though I wish it would be considered. I am more concerned with St. Louis County at this time. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. Why would we even consider taking it away? Masking is simple and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. This is from Lauren Bushbaum. Yes or no, are you comfortable with the idea of you're killing someone as long as it wasn't your intent and you weren't even aware you did it? For instance, say you were driving drunk and struck a pedestrian who died at the scene or later from injuries of the impact. You didn't feel it and kept going, and the incident wasn't traced to you, so you weren't made aware. I know whoever infected my mom didn't intend to kill her and was possibly asymptomatic and unaware of carrying any virus. Probably, he or she is still not aware of having been the one to pass on the germs. Lack of intent and awareness don't matter. If the answer to the question is no, then please always wear a mask and keep a safe distance in public. Please do not pass bills to 220, 222, and 223 like mandating the wearing of seatbelts or motorcycle helmets. The mandating of these simple safety precautions during a pandemic can save many lives. Excuse me. This is from Marilyn Wector. We do not believe that the county council should be able to overrule public health experts. We are horrified that you would make health a political decision as opposed to listening to the experts. We strongly urge you to do what is right and not pass these bills. This is from Donna Hull. My name is Donna Hull. I'm 73 years old, and I have so far been careful about my exposure to COVID by wearing a mask, limiting my contacts, and washing hands after being in public places. I find it unbelievable that there is a campaign to make us less safe by repealing the mask mandate. I believe these are the same people who are out to get Sam Page, who I support, after the Let Them Play debacle. Please know that there is tremendous support for continuing to adhere to CDC and county guidelines. This is from Lordis Kepalong. The mask mandate is important to keep because of the safety and welfare of everyone working in essential professions. I don't agree with appealing it because I feel that you appealed it would endanger people and might increase the number of people getting sick with the virus. I work at a grocery, as a grocery store employee, and I feel if the council appeals the mandate, I'm concerned my fellow coworkers and myself might end up contracting the virus, and most of us have loved ones who have compromised immune systems. I myself live with family members with compromised immune systems, and I don't want them to contract the virus because the council decided to appeal the mandate. Please, St. Louis Council, don't appeal the mandate. Think of everyone's safety and welfare and health. If you appealed it, you would endanger everyone's health.
Excuse me. From Jennifer Clifton. Why would you not support a measure that provides oversight to the county executive? This seems really simple. Oversight does not mean you overrule him/her if they are right. It just gives an avenue for our council representatives to rein in unchecked power should the need arise. Are you seriously suggesting the county executive knows what is best without exception, and the council members are not smart/qualified enough to weigh in on governing our county? If you believe the county executive should have no oversight, why do we even have a county From Susan Weissman. I'm writing to ask you to reject bills 220, 222, and 223. I believe strongly that it is important for the council to provide protections for St. Louis County through various mandates such as mask-wearing, limits to groups, et cetera. We know without question that mask-wearing, social distancing, and small group gatherings are essential to curb the impact of COVID-19. Lifting these, lifting these safety measures will ultimately hurt our economy. Please, vote no on these bills. From Lori Kirk. Please vote no on any bills to accept grant money for the election board. Accepting money puts, puts the recipient in the position of potentially being beholden to the donor wishes, I'm sorry, being beholding to the donor wishes. And we do not need this election to have any cloud of uncertainty over it. Thank you. From Alyssa Morales. Please do not repeal the mask mandate. I work in a job that puts me into contact with people every day, whether that would, whether that it be young or old. Repealing the mask mandate at a time like this really, in my opinion, just doesn't seem safe, especially since cases around the United States are still on the rocks. Even if in St. Louis, COVID-19 cases are declining, I'm sure that's only happening because people are wearing masks and social distancing. I'm sure the majority of workers would agree with me that with our, our job, masks keep us safe and makes everyone around us safer. If you do not repeal, if you do repeal the mask mandate, I'm going to have to quit my job. It's too much of a risk to catch COVID-19 and then spread it to hundreds of people whom I come into contact with because of the nature of my job as a store clerk. While yes, there is already risk in my job, I'd rather it not become riskier. Thank you for reading. From Ruth, I'm sorry, Ruth Brooks. As a citizen, as a citizen of St. Louis County for six decades, I have a certain sense of pride in the communities of St. George first, then Fenton, both unincorporated, in which I have resided. We've had some good leadership, some wanting. I've been most pleased with the role Dr. Sam Page has played, especially with the pandemic. I was so relieved to have someone with his medical credentials leading the county. A man of science who uses that background to enhance the lives of citizens in his community. I appreciate his database attempts at keeping us safe. Please respect the value of the database opinions of public health officials. Masks are the least we can do for our residents. Politics should not preside over citizen health. From Georgette Besson. Please do not remove the mask mandate in St. Louis. Doing so would recklessly endanger the most vulnerable, longness to infection, illness, economic hardship, and in some cases, death. The simple act of wearing a mask saves lives. As a grocery worker at Schnucks, I believe masks keep my coworkers and me safe, safer from contracting COVID. Without a mask mandate, people in St. Louis County will be less safe. Thank you. From Susan Spiegel. I'm writing, urge you to vote against bills 220, 222, and 223. A study after study has shown wearing masks along with social distancing are currently the only effective ways to prevent the spread of COVID-19. The only reason not to wear masks and to lift the mandate to wear masks is to make a political statement, a pretty shallow reason to endanger public health. Masks are not unlike seatbelts, which similarly impose a slight inconvenience on the user in vaccinations and paying taxes, all of which are required by law. Those opposed to mask-wearing are on the road to entering. Will they next refuse to pay taxes that pay their, pay your salaries? The purpose of your position as council members is to protect and promote the well-being of the entire community. Be faithful to your responsibility. If you do vote to lift the mask mandate, each of you will be personally responsible for the deaths, debilitation suffered by St. Louis area residents. Think about it. I'm a resident of the city of St. Louis, but my life is intertwined with the county. I shop there, and order takeout there, and I have family there. In the interest of the entire community, I strongly urge you to reject these bills respectfully. From Jaclyn Gallagher. I was recently made aware that there are few bills being introduced that would allow the council to essentially override decisions made by the Department of County Health during the pandemic. This is ridiculous. I understand some are upset about sports being canceled and having to wear a mask. But we don't allow people to not follow rules and/or laws just because they don't like them. I have faith in our Department of County Health to make decisions and recommendations based on the interests of all residents. If they and the CDC say sports are too high-risk and that mask-wearing should be mandated, we should not be able to override those recommendations or mandates. This is a pandemic. Where 210,000 people have died. I'm sorry for the kids, including my own, but they can't play sports right now. We can't refuse the guidance/mandates/recommendations just because we want to. It's in the best interests of our residents to follow the guidelines. Please, don't let a group of well-meaning parents bully you into going against science. From Charlene Buckley. Please do not vote for bills 220, 222, and 223. I've lived in St. Louis County my whole life. I'm terrified about our lack of unity in fighting this pandemic. I'm home. I keep my kids home. I've not seen my family since March because it's not worth the risk. We can't leave it up to the poor business owners, the schools, and the goodwill of the general public to protect us. We need leadership. And St. Louis County has so far provided it. Please do not stop now. This is what government is for. We're not nearly out of the woods yet. More people will die. It's not worth the risk. I know it's difficult to stand against the ill-informed and threatening individuals out there. They do not represent the majority, only the loudest and most threatening. Our state is in a total disaster. We're, we are called out regularly for our bad management, our numbers, our governor's lack of leadership. St. Louis County has been a leader in keeping us safe. I'm so grateful for everything you've done so far. Please do not end the current health and, please do not end the current please not end the current public health and safety orders. Thank you. From Karen Berry Albert. It is unthinkable that you are entertaining repealing the public mask requirement for St. Louis County. In the name of public health, I strongly urge the council to reject Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. I'm an at-risk group, age sixty-eight, and count of public health measures in place for me to continue to patronize your local merchants and not be relegated staying in my home twenty-four seven. You risk everyone's health when you so blatantly, blatantly ignore the science and react to the bullying tactics of some county residents. I expect more of you, our elected council members. I expect you all, I, I'm sorry, I expect you to do all you can to protect it, to protect the health of our residents and we'll be watching each votes on this critical issue. I personally know someone who lost their life to COVID with his entire family contracting it, and I know a couple who contracted. I do not wish anyone else who suffers from this virus. My children and grandchildren are driving to St. Louis in a few weeks to spend time with us after months of not seeing one another. They will not come by. If doing so, they will endanger their, sorry, let me start that again. They will not come if by doing so, they will endanger their children and their own health. Please do the smart thing and reject those bills. From Patricia Kirsten. Masks are necessary. We need to wear, excuse me, we need to wear the mask to keep everyone safe. It only makes sense. I would not feel safe without them. From Angie Wheeler. Please continue the mask mandate. The only thing keeping our area from high COVID rates is the use of the mandate. It's a small thing that has such big benefits for us all. I don't want my family to get COVID or to take a chance to pass it along to others. Plus, if you encounter anyone with COVID, you might not be as highly infected as you would be as if you didn't have a mask on. Trust the science and the scientific community to continue to wear masks. I hope the council is following science and those who have shown that they don't believe in it ended up having a super spreader event. I hope they're smarter than that. Keep the masks. From William Thompson. Thompson, I'm sure that is, sorry. Please reject Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. These bills risk the health and economy of our community. I write as a concerned resident of St. Louis County and a member of a high-risk group, a status that I share with so many of my family and friends. Science stresses that mask wearing by the general public curbs the transmission of the devastating coronavirus. Look to the states that have enacted mask mandates. These states have had lower growth rates of cases of this deadly virus. Wearing a cloth covering over the nose and mouth is a time honored, demonstrated, and straightforward way to halt the spread of COVID-19. I implore the council members to stand by actions and safeguard the health of county inhabitants. The economy of our region is endangered by abandoning actions that guard our safety. Fear the spread of this debilitating illness threatens our businesses. Our residents will not, will not want to venture out as they perceive a weakening of effective safety measures. People are terrified of this illness and for good reason. Again, I implore the council to continue safety measures such as mask, as a mask mandate and vote against Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. From Laura Jimujin, Jean Jimujin, I hope I pronounced that correctly. Regarding the ability of the health department to mandate masks, they should absolutely be able to do so. Masks are a very small thing we can all do to help our community feel safer during this pandemic. We all abide by the no shirt, no shoes, no shirt service policies. How is a mask any different? We do not do it for ourselves as much as for others in our community. That is what community is, working together and helping each other. Please allow businesses a level playing field and patrons a level of confidence in their personal safety by mandating masks for all when the health department and science indicate they are warranted. Thank you. From Geraldine Madigan. Please vote no on these bills. If passed, these bills would require the council to affirmatively vote to extend any executive order issued during a pandemic beyond fifteen days. Practically speaking, these bills would mean that the council could override mask orders, occupancy limits, even nursing home reporting requirements. Just by not taking a vote on extending them. Not only is this ridic, a ridiculous paragraph, but it's not in the best interest of public health or county residents. Please vote in opposition of Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Council should not be able to ignore or override decisions made by the Department of Public Health and public health experts.
Continuing with the council comments. From Sarah Yancy. I am writing to request and urge you not to vote for Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Please do not continue with the measures and procedures that have been working to protect the health of our residents. I'm sorry, that was please do continue with the measures and procedures that have been working to protect the health of our residents. Research shows that mask wearing is a key behavior in both protecting yourself and those around you. Those states and communities with this mandate in place have had slower growth of the virus than other states without the mandate. I will continue to frequent the businesses that use and enforce the current standard and will not frequent those businesses that do not. If the restriction is lifted, then business owners are left in a sea of uncertainty and must worry about their own workers being exposed. Please vote no on Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Thanks for your consideration. Next comment is from Eric Horizer. I am writing today to request the immediate passage of Bills two twenty-two and two twenty-three by the county council. No government entity is above oversight in this country, and that includes our county executor. The county council should embrace this oversight, especially when they have nothing to hide, and not vote their constituents' rights away. If the thought to keep our elderly or our immune compromise safe, then why aren't there restrictions on those groups to go to restaurants, bars, and casinos? Can you imagine Sam Page telling senior citizens that they enter a casino or a diabetic that they can't eat at a restaurant? Yet he tells our young citizens, who mostly cannot vote and yet handle the virus with the most success, they cannot play for their own good. Minors who have, who have guardians who should be making those decisions, all while citing faulty data that include freshmen, sophomores in college. Let me be clear, this isn't about masks. My children wear their masks as told every day. I wear my mask every place I go, whether it is mandated or not. These bills are about oversight, about checks and balances, about the notion that one person does not speak for every single person under rule, that we people have a voice. Next comment is from Shelley Hoshstein. I hope I said that right. I am writing to urge the council to reject Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three because these bills ignore the recommendations of science and elevate politics over public health. As an individual the age of sixty-five and with health issues that place me at higher risk for serious COVID complications, I urge you to continue to support the measures now in place of all St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of universal public masking and social distancing to curb the spread of COVID-19, to slow infection rates, and to prevent a multitude of cases and fatalities. That alone should convince you to reject these bills. But when the needs of our local economy are considered, that further tips the scale in favor of requiring the mask mandate and other safety precautions. Without governmental support, businesses will be unable to insist on universal masking for the protection of all of their customers and staff. Many customers in turn will cease to nice, safe local businesses. Our local economy will suffer as a result. Until there is a safe and effective vaccine, the council has a moral and legal responsibility to follow scientific guidelines requiring masks and social distancing as the only means to curtail the spread of this unrelenting virus. Please do not be dissuaded by political pressure from doing what is best and right for the residents and businesses of St. Louis County. I urge you to vote no on Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Thank you. Next comment is from Chris Schmidt. I stand with local six sixty-five united food and commercial workers about maintaining public health protections such as face coverings. Public health must be protected and limits on the health department should be prevented. Please vote accordingly. Next comment is from Devin Wilson. I am asking that you remove the mask mandate for people who choose not to wear them. Really, they do not stop the spreading of the virus and makes it very uncomfortable to breathe. It makes no sense to walk in a restaurant with a mask and then take it off while seated, then put it on again to walk out. Please unmask St. Louis and let those who want to wear them do so as needed. Next comment is from Linda O'Pearl. I am commenting today on St. Louis County's decision to sunset common sense health guidelines. I cannot understand why any person would find adhering to guidelines such as masking and social distancing for the protection of our collective health objectionable. Especially when we have not seen a reduction in positivity rates since this virus started. We have C, no smoking laws, speed limits, stop signs, and many laws enacted to protect ourselves and our community from illness, injury, and death. And yet, for some reason, simple guidelines are an issue with so many who, for reasons I cannot fathom, do not care if they or others get sick or die. What can possibly be a valid argument against this? The same people who claim to be pro-life or care about life now choose to endanger life. No one likes wearing masks. We all want the life we had pre-COVID back, but until we defeat our strongly or strongly mitigate the effects of the virus, we will not see anything close to our old lives. How angry I get when I encounter people who say, I'm done with this. I have news for them. The virus is not done with you. Any hopes I may have that I can go into a restaurant, shop in the malls, host company, or even have a family holiday would be dashed by any reduction in CDC guidelines. These unselfish actions on the part of those of us who have made sacrifices in an effort to defeat this virus will be overridden by the ignorance and selfishness of others and will ensure many of us will discontinue contributing to the economy and be driven back into our homes for our own and our loved ones' safety. I implore you, vote on the side of people like me who do want our lives back, but not at the cost of another's well-being. Thank you. Next comment is from Margaret Rowe. I am writing to let you know that I strongly object to Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. I urge you to vote no. Scientists and public health officials all agree that public masking is one of the most effective ways we can stop the spread of COVID-19. It is a simple way to help ensure that we can get back to normal in the shortest time possible. It is not an infringement of rights any more than wearing a seatbelt or following traffic laws. The rules we have in place will affect how I and many others are able to move about in the county, making it very uncomfortable support, to support local businesses. Without these safety measures, we would be endangering the lives of many, especially those who have no choice but to work and be out in the community. I believe our county has been doing a good job in its response to COVID-19, and again, I urge you to vote no on Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Thank you. Next comment is from Kelly Grossman. As a concerned resident of St. Louis County, I am deeply concerned with the current Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three being proposed to override public health measures recommended by the county health department. I am concerned with what it could do to the mask mandate we have in place. I live in Eureka where there are far too many people who are dismissive of the behind masks. Public health professionals, scientists, and the medical community at large all agree. Mask wearing is the most beneficial tool we currently have to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. I have no doubt that should be the mandate, that should the mandate be removed, my community will be maskless once again. That will force me and my family back into quarantine as we are more vulnerable and cannot take chances with the virus. The removal will make it too risky for me to go grocery shopping. My children will be forced to remain in virtual school. The virtual education offered by our district greatly diminishes children back full-time so their education will suffer. Wearing a mask is a simple and effective way to minimize the spread of COVID-19, and yet there are too many who, if given the choice, refuse to do so. Please reject these bills so that the critical safety net does not get taken away from those of us who need it. Thank you. Next comment is from Michelle Flanagan. I'm emailing today to express my concern over continued lockdowns and insane restrictions. Mr. Page, as I'm sure you are aware, the World Health Organization has come out this week and stated that lockdown restrictions should immediately end and they cause much more harm than the virus itself and never be used again. As the WHO is the premier health organization in the world, I'm assuming you be, you will be following their recommendations and, and all restrictions as you have single-handedly destroyed so many lives with your insane restrictions. Also, Mr. Page, enough please with the high school and youth sports spectator restrictions. It's just complete madness. There is more than enough room for spectators to social distance at outdoor sporting events. Stop the madness now. Next comment, Judy. Please, please, please listen to public health experts. A mask hurts no one and can only help. Removing a chance to get this virus under control and our economy back in order would be completely irresponsible. Again, a mask hurts absolutely no one. No one. Next comment is from Merle Singer. I strongly urge the council to reject Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Unlike surrounding areas, St. Louis County so far has been following the guidelines of medical including the guidance about universal masking. In the absence of any such leadership from the governor, or for that matter, the president, I have taken comfort from these protective measures. I have also taken comfort from the fact that St. Louis County is led by a medical doctor who is guided by science, and I am frankly infuriated by the people who have fought his efforts to keep us safe. I cannot understand those who want to reopen anything yet resist the easiest and most effective ways to open safely. If businesses can't enforce mask wearing, their employees will be injured and they will lose customers like me. Those who haven't abided by these common sense measures are putting everyone in danger and prolonging the course of the virus as well as the economic recovery. Social distancing is not a political statement. Avoiding large gatherings is not a political statement. And wearing masks is not a political statement. Nor are these personal freedoms. No one has the freedom to endanger others. I urge you all to please vote no on Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Thank you. Next comment is from William Rasher. I urge you to vote against Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. These bills will provide a means to lessen the protections that have been in place to protect residents in not only the county, but in the entire metropolitan area. Wearing masks protects people from COVID-19 and saves lives. If passed, these bills will remove the power of our health officials to make decisions regarding the necessary protection that is effective in preventing the spread of the virus. Matters in motion tend to stay in motion. Matters at rest tend to stay at rest. By creating an automatic and arbitrary deadline for the elimination of protective measures not based on science is to put the public at risk of the spread of this deadly disease. If the motion to pass these bills is to spur the economy, letting safety measures lapse will not encourage for many others to participate in the let's take a chance gambit and socialize with those who decide to go without masks in public. In fact, it may have the opposite effect, which could result in a return to a shutdown of the business. of the businesses we are trying to save. I urge you to vote against these bills. Our safety demands that we leave health decisions in the hands of the experts, not set some arbitrary deadlines to remove safety measures, including the requirement to wear masks and limit occupancy in bars and restaurants that have proven to be effective in spreading the virus. Next comment is from Tracy Bennett. Some oversight on this council is desperately needed. Please come together as a council to work together and get St. Louis back to work and school. Success can only follow. Next comment is from Mary Dimitru. I ask that you vote against these bills. As an executive of a retail business with over three hundred employees in St. Louis County and as a county resident, I have grave concerns with summarily ending safety measures such as mandatory use of masks in public and occupancy limits. In the last seven days, the average number of new cases per day for St. Louis County alone exceeds the average number of new cases per day for the entire state when the state was under lockdown. Ending the lockdown didn't save lives and keep people healthy. It instead gave the virus an opportunity to exploit, and the result has been a steep increase in cases and deaths since May. As an employer in the area, it matters a great deal to me that our employees work in a safe environment. Requiring the use of masks for both customers and employees, along with the extensive measures we've undertaken as a business to maintain safety protocols, have been essential to ensuring that our employees stay healthy at work while protecting the health of our customers. However, as a business, we can't make our customers wear masks. Ending this requirement at the county level will make it impossible to keep our employees and all customers safe in our stores. As a consumer who is at risk for the virus, I severely restricted my visits to stores, restaurants, and parks frequented by a lot of people, some of whom inevitably either refused to wear masks or wear them incorrectly. When I and others like me shop online rather than in local businesses purely for health safety reasons, the community loses income to local businesses as well as tax dollars. Lifting restrictions when it's safe to do so is the right thing to do. Now is clearly not that time. I see a visual reminder of this as I walk through county cemeteries. The number of new graves every week remains an astonishing and sobering reminder that we're still in the thick of it. Removing safety measures when the virus is rampant will only prolong the time until we will be safe and with unnecessary loss of life. Please vote against bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Next comment is from Dawn Herbeck. Please vote in favor of bills two twenty-two and two twenty-three. Are you listening to your constituents? You ran for office because you wanted to serve and make a difference in St. Louis County, correct? We are ready to turn the page and elect someone to the position of County Executive, Paul Berry III. Please refrain from lecturing us and trying to put us down. I am sorry that you, Lisa Clancy, see our concerns as partisanship, privilege, and racism. I see this movement as St. Louis County coming together to fight for what we believe in. Northwest, south, and the central corridor are united. Please also decline the grant from CTCL. This sounds too good to be true, and that means it is. No thank you to harvesting ballots.
Continuing on the comments today, this is from Teresa Moore. I want you to know what plans the County Library has for reopening. I am bombarded with virtual programming emails but have heard nothing about plans to open up the libraries for in-person use. The schools and parks are open again, but the libraries are still closed. Not everyone can get internet access to the library, and the internet isn't the only reason people need to use the library. The library has done a lousy job with VR when it comes to letting the public know when sites are going to open again. This next one comes from Dr. Charles Friedman and Karen Friedman. Please do not jeopardize the health of your constituents and the financial health of our community. Specifically, please reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three and maintain measures that protect the health of St. Louis County residents. We have learned that lifting public safety measures will increase our rate of COVID-19 and result in even more severe lockdowns during the Christmas season, the most profitable time for most businesses, large and small. This could be the nail in the coffin for so many of our local stores. Look around, our community has adopted the safety measure. Businesses have implemented policies for workers and shoppers and developed innovative adjustments to support their patrons. Undoing an approach that reduces the spread of COVID-19 will also undo the movement forward on the economy and will place unimaginable burdens on our hospitals. Why would the county council want to encourage our citizens to let down their guard when science clearly tells us that masks, social distancing, and avoidance of indoor spaces is the key, the clear key, to maintaining our health, which is essential to maintaining and improving the economy? With two physicians in the family, we are very committed to following safety measures. And I can assure you, lifting the mandates in place today will not only keep our family from visiting local businesses, which we are committed to supporting, especially now, but others will do the same. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. This is from Melissa Carter. Please reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Lifting public safety measures will hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and without the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will not allow my family to continue to visit local businesses, and I suspect others will do the same. Without the safety measures, we are endangering our lives and the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. This next is from Tom Khan. My name is Thomas Khan, and I live in St. Louis County. I oppose and strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Leave public health issues to public health professionals. Just look at the state of Missouri. St. Louis and St. Louis County have lower rates of infection than rural Missouri because of the masks and other provisions implemented. This community can go about its business close to normally if people wear masks and maintain social distancing as recommended by health officials. If the recommendations of public health officials only benefited the individual following them, I could understand making them voluntary, but they don't. These restrictions are akin to drunk driving laws. Wearing masks and other provisions help prevent an infected person from giving the COVID-19 virus to others. Without everyone wearing masks, it is simply not safe to go to stores and other places where people gather. My ninety-nine-year-old father has been stuck in an apartment for seven months because some people refuse to wear masks. It has totally upended our lives. If only people would take simple precautions, our family's world would be much better. Why would anyone want a political entity to make public health decisions? Please vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. This is from Joanne Hogloff. I live in Baldwin, Missouri. I have been appalled at the abdication of responsibility by Governor Parson as the COVID-positive numbers have surged in Missouri. Our state is frequently the subject of dismay in national news as our governor insists on leaving the burden of public safety during a deadly pandemic to localities. Fortunately for St. Louis County, we have leadership that has imposed a mask mandate and social restrictions so folks like me over age sixty can feel comfortable going to stores, restaurants, et cetera, knowing that everyone will be protecting each other with masks and distancing. I feel sorry for those counties and towns where mask wearers are subject to ridicule as those who proclaim freedom are free to spread their germs with impunity. I strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three as they are a terrible politicization of public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health officials agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. Lifting public safety measures will, in fact, hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and I feel that without the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will not allow my family to continue to visit local businesses, and I suspect others will do the same. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. This next is from Andrea Clark. I am dismayed to see that the county council is trying to upend the authority of the County Executive and County Health Department to make orders during public health emergencies. To this point in time, St. Louis County has done an admirable job of mitigating the spread of COVID-19 by instituting common sense mask requirements and limits on indoor and outdoor activities. Currently, the infection rates are quite a bit lower here than in outlawing parts of our state where such rules are not in effect. I, as a healthy sixty-eight-year-old, personally feel comfortable moving around the county with the knowledge that people around me are masking up and socially distancing. If it ain't broke, why fix or change it? Please vote no and keep us moving in the right direction rather than needlessly putting more people at risk for no good reason. This is from Heather Malik. I was alarmed to read today about the content in bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Please vote no. Continue to mandate continued mask use in St. Louis County. I will not allow my family to visit shops in St. Louis County that do not require masks, and it is not fair for the businesses to be put in the position to enforce mask-wearing. Mask-wearing is the one easy thing that we can all do to prevent the spread and get our kids back to school and support local businesses. Let's use common sense and keep our kids in school. This next one is from Jennifer Jean Jacques. I strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three as they are biological warfare on public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of facial coverings to curb the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not, such as Pennsylvania, Delaware, and New York. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. Lifting public safety measures will hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and I fear that without the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will not continue to visit local businesses, and my hope is that others will do the same. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. This is from Deborah Horowitz. I am very concerned about bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three and how they will affect the public health of the residents of St. Louis County. The health and welfare of county residents should not be a politicized topic, but rather one that is directed by science and facts in the community. Because cases are rising in Missouri, I urge members of the St. Louis County Council to vote no on these bills. There are no medical and public health experts that do not agree on the importance of public universal masking to effectively curb the spread of COVID-19. Communities that have universal masking and enforce this mandate have slower growth rates compared to those that did not and have prevented thousands of COVID-19 deaths. Lifting, excuse me, public safety measures will, in fact, hurt our local economy. I myself have begun to go back to stores and enforce the universal masking now in place. If that is lifted, I will stop. As a widow in my late sixties, I cannot risk infection with COVID and hope my government will continue to protect me with the appropriate time-tested safety policies. Mask-wearing is simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19. I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. This is from Debbie Kitchen. I am sending my thoughts about our COVID response. We are lucky the council directed by Dr. Page took the actions they took. We would have lost more lives had that not happened. I am a high-risk senior citizen. I have been at home since March 11th. Myself and others can't resume a daily life of any kind as long as we continue ignoring science. Mask up and stop the spread. I'd really like to see my family but can't as long as we have people being so irresponsible not wearing a mask. For the good of the whole, keep mandate in place. Protect our children from a future of health issues. This is from Leslie Fogel, who says she or he is an M.D. and a Ph.D. To whom it may concern, I write to you as a concerned citizen and physician. Please be aware that our mask mandate is responsible for the difference between a positivity rate of fourteen percent in Missouri and four-point-four percent in St. Louis County. No one likes wearing masks or even being told what to do, but this is the sacrifice that we must make to proceed with our normal activities. We must wear masks to keep our children in school, keep our stores open, and keep our hospitals manageable. In addition to saving lives by keeping people safe from SARS-CoV-2, these should all be a priority, given the possible ramifications of interrupting children's educations and negatively impacting the economy. Unfortunately, there is much that remains unknown about SARS-CoV-2, but we do have very clear evidence that masks are effective in diminishing transmission. We must put politics aside for a moment and listen to our public health experts on this matter. Ultimately, we all have the same desire to move past this pandemic, and masks are undoubtedly the quickest way to achieve the goal. This is from Kurt Whitzel. For me, a lifelong residence of St. Louis County, last week was incredibly sad. In my forty-five-plus years in business, politics, and government, I have never seen a chair of any charitable civic or business board of directors conduct themselves in the way Chairperson Clancy did this past Tuesday. The role of the chair of a legislative body such as the county council is to help conduct the business meeting of the organization to provide direction and decisions for the citizens of St. Louis County while, at the same time, allowing each of the county council members to ask questions and present their views to the public prior to voting on the issues that come before the council. It is not your role as chair to wield the gavel to promote your own agenda while running the meeting. It is not your role as chair to shut down discussion and restrict or limit comments of any member of the council, thus denying the voting public the opportunity to hear their views. It is not your role as chair to respond in a condescending manner to any or all council members' viewpoints in which you do not agree. It is not your role as chair to loudly berate fellow council persons with the phrase, quote, "You are out of order," when in fact, they are not out of order, and they have the absolute right to express themselves, their viewpoints, even if those opinions are different from your own. It is not your role as chair to decide in the middle of a meeting that you have the right and privilege to provide a lecture to other council members on why some piece of legislation that is being held until a later date should be defeated based on your political opinion, and that it is not your job to lecture your colleagues on other. Others are ignorant and unaware of the issue before them, including irrelevant information like why the President of the United States is not a good president. Chairperson Clancy, yes, you can look up from your texting and pay attention now. Please be aware, you are the worst example of a tyrannical, I believe, tyrannical chair I have seen in all my years. Shame on you. Okay. The next one is from Alan Freed. I urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three as they politicize public health in the worst possible way. The council should continue to follow the advice of medical professionals and protect our health. Mask mandates work. We've seen this in this county and throughout the world. The pandemic persists partially because politicians have lost sight of their primary purpose and instead have focused on being reelected. I have worn a mask every time I've left the house. I wear one at work anytime I am in proximity with my coworkers. I have managed to remain healthy. I want to protect my family and my fellow citizens. Preventing the government from protecting our health is the worst possible decision. Show that you care. Vote no. Thank you. This is from Kate Human. Do not pass this bill. We have worked very hard to control this virus and to keep our family members safe. Do not destroy our progress by selfish political shortsightedness. Do you want schools, hospitals, nursing homes constantly in the state of crisis? Workers in these areas are bearing a huge burden to continue some degree of normalcy and security for our society. Households with a single parent, two working parents, or a vulnerable family member are terribly stressed. Explain to the population that in order to have schools, playgrounds, restaurants, theaters, sports, no masks, they need to follow the rules and get the transmission rates, hospital admissions, et cetera, below an acceptable level. It is more math and science than politics. Take a look at northeast Wisconsin. Want those numbers? And this is from Amy Eichmann. I was appalled at the arrogance, contempt, and hatred that Lisa Clancy displayed at last week's council meeting for those who disagree with her, including her colleagues and constituents. No one wants anyone to die or to become sick. Her attitude was insulting and inappropriate. It has been stated that decisions are made based on evidence. However, the council chair has ignored current recommendations to open up the county and prefers instead to rely on Sam Page's secret science. The interim county executive was recently photographed out and about with no mask and not socially distanced, so do not lecture this community about basic measures to stop the spread of the virus. It is also laughable to blame President Trump or Governor Parson. They only- They only provided you with the funding. You controlled how to use it. Below, I have included several current reputable source links that clearly demonstrate a valid second opinion on COVID science and public policy. I support bills 222 and 223 to ensure that real science is debated and secret science is questioned. Thank you. And Ms. Eichmann ends with various links to a number of articles.
Madam Chair, before we continue.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Not that I don't enjoy listening to Mr. Christopher Avs Avenue. How do you say your last name? Is it Av?
It's Ave.
Your radio voice, very nice, by the way. I do have a hard stop at 3:30. I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. How late can others stay on the call today? Councilman Tracus and Councilwoman Dunaway and Gray, are you all available until 4:00 or later?
I am, yes.
I am, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes, till about 5:00. It's the best time for me, but I can stay after that.
Councilman Tracus, can you stay till 5:00?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dunaway?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we continue reading until 5:00 P.M. and then reconvene Monday at 1:00 P.M., Monday the 16th at 1:00 P.M. I'm sorry, today's the 16th, Monday the 19th at 1:00 P.M.
If you need to stay.
Yes, Councilman Tracus.
Let me just check my calendar for Monday. I'm fine with that. I can do that.
Okay.
And if you want to stay to 5:30 or 6:00, I just may have to be in the car for a little while.
Well, let's go with this motion for now. We can revise it if we need to later. So again, yes, go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
I do have another meeting at noon that'll go till 2:00 on Monday. I could join, but I'll be late.
Okay, I believe we will have a quorum on Monday at 1:00. And I have data unless anyone has changed their schedule. I have data from the doodle poll that I sent out. So I believe at 1:00 on Monday, we will be able to have a quorum.
I'll be there, ma'am.
Yeah, so I'll second your motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Dunaway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Fitch. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. From Ann Bauer. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I cannot even begin to fathom why the issue of limiting authority for mask orders in St. Louis County would be on the agenda of the county council. Only because the mask orders do I feel as I can't, I'm sorry, only because of the mask orders do I feel as if I can move about the community. Instead of debating whether or not the power for ordering a mask used to be limited, you should be urging St. Charles County, Franklin County, Jefferson County to adopt similar measures. In fact, you should be making a strong statement directly to the governor urging him to order a statewide mask policy. What are members thinking? Every day, the research seems to be stronger on the benefits of mask use. I am concerned about my own 60-year-old, eight-year-old self. What about workers? It's bad enough that there's no good way to enforce these measures. I still get concerned that I may be unprotected because some people have little regard for the orders. However, in my area that is diminished over time, we are probably getting used to it and the compliance is increasing rather than decreasing. I strongly urge the council to reject bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are a terrible politicization of public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. I have followed the statistics on a daily basis until the problem with reporting stopped at the last couple of days. From what I can tell, the rates of infection are reducing in St. Louis County and city. The places with mask rules, St. Charles County keeps rising. Is there a reason anyone on the council thinks the mask ordinance is a bad thing? Without an ordinance, how will responsible businesses do anything other than request compliance? They will be left to shrug it off when people are in their businesses and not complying with requests. I understand that businesses have difficulty with enforcement anyway, but it will only be worse without an ordinance. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. We put on seatbelts, strap children in car seats, drive in the right lane, follow the traffic signals. Why can't we accept the mask ordinance? Because of the failure of many of our top government institutions. And I have to stop there, ma'am. That's over 400 words. From Abigail Weller. Please vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are detrimental to our region. Our current mask mandate has kept many members of the community safe and healthy. Masking is simple, easy, and effective. Along with social distancing, hand washing, thousands of lives can be saved. Medical and public health experts in our region and across the country agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. By lifting this public safety measure, you are putting lives and livelihoods at risk. Please consider the potential outcomes. Thousands of people could become sick. Our local health officials could become overwhelmed. Elderly people and those who are immune compromised. Individuals will feel unsafe outside of their homes. Business owners will have a harder time enforcing masks within their places of business. Business owners may be forced to close if their workers or visitors slash customers have tested positive for COVID and visited unmasked while they restaff and clean. Public masking is the least we can do. As you represent me, please, please, please vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. From Nicole Darling. Masks stop the spread. Masks are life-saving. Everyone needs to wear a mask to protect their loved ones. To protect loved ones, they are for the good. As long as there is a pandemic, we must wear masks. It's my right to protect myself and others. From Becky Bubinik, I hope I pronounced that correctly. Excuse me. I want to express my position to bills 220, 222, and 223. I believe these bills would just introduce inefficiency into government response to an emergency. That's harmful. Please vote against these bills. From Kristy Jansen. St. Louis County needs a mask mandate. Protects all of us, especially our most vulnerable. Shoppers from St. Charles County come to St. Louis County because of our mask mandate. We may be forced to shop in the city if St. Louis County does not have a mask mandate to protect its citizens. I strongly urge the council to reject bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are a terrible politicization of public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Thank you. From Elsa Surface, Surface, Survas, hope I pronounced that correctly. I'm writing you in hopes that I can help convince you not to repeal the mask mandate. Thousands of people are dying from the virus, and scientists have said that if everyone in the USA wears a mask properly and consistently for eight weeks, we could get this virus down to a manageable level. Masks not restrict your oxygen intake or cause CO2 buildup. We need to continue wearing masks. I'm an essential worker and go to work every day risking my life. If you repeal mandatory masks, it will put me, my coworkers, and everyone else is exponentially in more danger than we already are. People look at the government to set an example and to be authority figures. And if you repeal the mask mandate, you are telling everyone masks don't work and this virus isn't a big deal. Masks do work, and this virus is a very big deal. And you need to make sure the people of St. Louis know that. I already know many people who have died or been crippled because of this virus. Please don't let that list grow. Don't repeal the mask mandate. From William Rowell. Please reject bills 220, 222, and 223. At this point in the effort to stop the coronavirus, we all need the intelligent measures. We need all the intelligent measures we can find, with masks at the top of the list. No one's fundamental rights are infringed by requirements where a mask is dated times and places during a pandemic such as this. No one needs to be protected from a temporary rule that promotes the safety of everyone. It is not an infringement on my rights to have to stop at a red light or wear a seatbelt or put on a mask. Like the red light in the seatbelt, the mask value is well-understood and supported by data. This is not a time when you, our public representatives, should have your hands tied. You need room to make intelligent decisions for the benefit of our health and our economy, and the time to implement those decisions properly. That's why we elected you to do. Please don't cave in to pressure from the anti-facts lobby. From Amy Kalishman. I live in St. Louis County. I'm an attorney who handles medical malpractice cases for over 500 medical providers. As a medical legal expert in the area of healthcare, I can promise you that I'm well-informed about the presence and spread of COVID-19 in our community. It is quite alarming to me that there would be any consideration for reducing or eliminating mask usage. It is evidence-based science that masks reduce the spread and contagion of COVID-19. The proof is in the pudding when you look at the numbers in St. Louis County versus other neighboring counties. Please support public health and continue to require the mask mandate masks in all public spaces. Together, we can try to live with the virus until there is a vaccine that is safe for all. Respectfully submitted. From Natalie Seber. Please vote to accept this 2 million private grant to help ensure all voices are heard in this most important election. Voter suppression already hinders our democracy, but now with the pandemic, we need forward-thinking council members to fight for every vote. This grant will help the St. Louis County elections get the extra staffing and safety measures needed to ensure all voters in St. Louis County feel safe to vote. If it is good for St. Charles and Lincoln Counties, then it is good for St. Louis County. Please do right by the people of St. Louis County. Thank you. From John Crody. As a lifelong resident of St. Louis County and a senior citizen, it is upsetting and disappointing that some members of the county council appear to be intent on worsening the trend of refuting knowledge and science in favor of political grandstanding. Recommendations and policies that have major health consequences for county residents should be left to the health professionals and not to be subject to the whims of politicians. I urge the council to reject this bad idea. From Ann Egovino. Please allow bills 220, 222, and 223 to remain. They offer the best protection we have to date to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Masks are inexpensive, easy to wear, and available. They work. I realize that keeping businesses to social distancing limits is extremely hard on them, but it's a measure that will help prevent the spread of this devastating disease. Reporting the number of cases is essential so the spread of the containment of this virus can be known. Please allow these restrictions to continue. From Nathan Wojcowski. I've been a Schnucks teammate since May. Schnucks has done their part to make it a safe environment for us essential workers and the customers who shop in our stores. Dropping the county mask mandate will not only make the COVID numbers in the county increase, it will also create, it also no longer creates a safe environment for us workers and other people inside our store. Please consider the safety of your essential workers. From Laura Agarries, I hope I pronounced that correctly. I'm writing to convince the council to reject bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are a threat to the public health of our county residents. I strongly urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. I'm a teacher, and I'm currently teaching in person. I love what I do, but I know that it comes with risks. If I am further exposed because of these bills, my services may no longer be available affecting a large community within our school. Masking is so simple. My primary grade students have absolutely no issues with it. So I say to the opposition, something I frequently say to my students, many times in life, we have to do things we don't want to do. This is one of those crucial times to protect St. Louis County residents and reject bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you for your consideration. From Lance Finney. Please reject bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are a politicization of public health that will hurt the people for St. Louis County. And he includes a graph here that is referenced. Missouri case counts are the highest they have ever been. Even though we are all tired of the pandemic, that's no reason to enable it. Masks are the best mechanism we have for slowing the spread of the virus until vaccines are in place. They aren't perfect, but they work better than anything else we have available to us. Our family has not eaten, excuse me, our family has not eaten at or in a restaurant since March. We have not visited a theater, gym, or place of worship in that time either. This is because of the pandemic, not because of mask mandate. Dropping the mandate will lengthen the pandemic, meaning that families like ours won't be participating in the economy for further months. Lifting the mask mandate would risk lives and hurt businesses. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. And Nancy Compton. While other Missouri counties are seeing a rise in the number of COVID-19 cases, St. Louis is seeing a decrease in cases as a direct result of the safety precautions and mask-wearing mandate initiated by county executive Sam Page. I urge you to keep coronavirus safety measures in place. Without them, we know not everyone will continue to wear masks to protect others. We can't risk precious lives by allowing COVID numbers to rise again. Your no votes on bills 220, 222, and 223 will save lives. Respectfully.
Continuing with public forum. From Bob Pickard. To the council, please vote against sunsetting mask mandates and occupancy limits in St. Louis County, bills 220, 222, and 223. As an at-risk person, I will be less likely to venture out into public without these safeguards. I believe what others think the same way. Instead of opening our economy, it will have the effect of further shutting things down. I have lost a close friend to COVID. He relied upon other people to protect him by wearing masks because of his underlying lung disease. Requiring masks is a very small trade-off of personal freedom to help protect those around us. It can't be left to individual choice. Thank you. From Laura Reinders. I would like to express my strong belief that the St. Louis County council should not be able to overrule what our public health and scientific professionals say regarding COVID-19. Stay smart and stay safe. From Devon Wilson. I would like to ask you remove the mask mandate. It's very hard to breathe, and there's no way they stop the virus from spreading. I think masks should be volunteer-based only for those who choose to wear them and have medical issues. Thanks. Have a good day. From Mona Tolls. We need our mask if the president can get the virus and we trying to work every day to stay safe at our job. From Jennifer Harris Dalt. I urge you to uphold the ability of the county executive and the health department to make important decisions during a pandemic. We know from the CDC that wearing masks and limiting nonessential public outings is essential for us to get through this pandemic. Attempts to end the mask mandate are short-sighted and will cause harm. We all are ready for this to be over. We want to get back to hugging friends and extended family, but the only way to get there is to be diligent now, even when we don't want to. Pandemics should not be subject to partisan divisions, but must always rely on the data of our health officials. I urge you to continue to protect the people of St. Louis County by allowing the health department to guide us. I urge you to continue to protect the people of St. Louis County by allowing the health department to guide us. From Michael Owens. Dear council members, I write to raise my objections to bills 220, 222, and 223. Dr. Page has taken steps to prevent the further spread of COVID-19 in St. Louis County. The steps he has taken have proved to be wise and effective. We are enjoying a much lower rate of infection than the rest of the state. If you pass these bills, you are making the health of St. Louis County citizens a political toy. I ask Councilman Trakis to vote no, and I ask the other council members to think you may well be responsible for the increase of this pandemic. From Matt Brownhofer. No idea if this is true, but I saw this online. The St. Louis County Council will be considering free bills on Tuesday, October 13th. These bills, 220, 222, and 223, will severely restrict the power of the county executive and county health department during a pandemic. Health and safety orders like mask mandates, occupancy limits, and even long-term care facility reporting requirements will lapse if a super majority of the council doesn't vote to renew them every 15 days. We all have to be crazy to lift any mandates, especially after things haven't markedly improved. I won't go near businesses that don't have a mask mandate because even walking into those stores to support the local economy just isn't worth it to my health, my family's health, and the overall progress of slowing the spread of the coronavirus. What is your job if not to support the health and welfare of your citizens? We're all used to putting on masks now, so let's keep it going until the death and infection rates drop to near zero or until at least a vaccine is widely available. Listen to the experts on this, not the rabble-rousers who cry like a baby about wearing a mask to do their shopping. If they don't get it still, then keep explaining it. Explain it better, dumb it down if you have to. For once, believe in the science. We're all in this together, so let's act like a community that cares about each other and our most vulnerable citizens. Good God, I shouldn't have to spend the time sending a note to community leaders, teaching them how to act like leaders of a community. Thank you for your time. From Matthew Ferlong. I've heard bills are being voted on that will greatly reduce the ability of leadership to enforce necessary health and safety restrictions going forward. This sounds like a terrible idea. Missouri's new cases, hospitalization, and death rates, seven-day moving averages are all, are at an all-time high eight months into this pandemic, in part because the governor refused to ever issue a mask mandate, even after he caught it himself. I've lost a family member and multiple others test positive and have their lives greatly impacted because people don't take this seriously. Don't make this political. Do the right thing. From Jan Genus. I am writing to implore the county council to please vote for bills 220, 222, and 223. The county council must have oversight of the county executive, or we are nothing but a dictatorship. No one person should have the authority to make a unilateral decision of which our representatives have no say. We live in a republic founded by the people and for the people, and all voices should be heard. Please vote for these bills and take back the council's power to speak for the people. From Scott Combe. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I have been a proud resident of the St. Louis County my entire life. Thus far, your leadership during this pandemic has kept us safe and in better health positions in many parts of, other parts of the state. The medical experts continue to push for easy-to-follow measures, including wearing masks, keeping safe distances, and good hygiene. We all want the COVID-19 pandemic to end quickly, and with your leadership, we can continue to be good stewards of our common good. I have returned to working in my office and feel more comfortable doing so due to the county mask mandates. There just isn't a question about doing what is right. Let's not risk the safety of our neighbors or risk hurting our please do the right thing and maintain the mandates on masks. It's easy and should not be political. For the sake of our community, please vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. From Michelle Seiler. Dear St. Louis County Council, I live in Seven Pine subdivision 63146. I am unemployed due to COVID-19 freelance costume designer. COVID-19, along with 250,000 American lives, has killed my industry. One of the treasured organizations in St. Louis County is a new Jewish theater, which closed in March 2020 due to the COVID-19 risks. Was officially suspended by the JCC until at least 2022 yesterday. This was my artistic home. This was my main employer as a gig worker. On any given NJT-employed, any given show, NJT-employed at least 20 people, including actors, equity union member actors, and stage managers. The week's AEA members can work directly affects their eligibility for health insurance. Other St. Louis theater companies are likely to follow as they all are already canceled summer and fall seasons. We and theater have done our share across USA to close up for the greater good of all. We mask, we stay home, we sew masks, we donate masks, feed back people to wear masks, so one day, maybe, we can get back to the work we love. Now it is your time to do your share, protect our lives, and the possibility of us working again. Vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. I strongly urge the council to reject bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are a terrible politicization of public health. Instead, I urge with the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. Lifting public safety measures will in fact hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and I fear that without government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will not allow my family to continue to visit local businesses, and I suspect others will do the same. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. From Joanna Daz. Dear county council. Between April and July, my two living grandparents died from the COVID-19 epidemic. One lived in New York and one was a resident at an assisted living facility here in St. Louis. My spouse, medical worker, also got COVID-19 in April, back when there was no mask mandate. He wore an N95 and full PP at work, but when he went to the grocery store in Home Depot to buy essential goods for our family, he was one of the only people wearing a mask. Right now, St. Louis County has one of the lowest infection rates in the state of Missouri and does not have overflowing hospitals because of the mask mandate and other restrictions in place. This low infection rate is allowing students to return to school in person, which is essential for their growth and development. I have been pleasantly surprised at how easily children have adjusted to wearing masks, and I suggest that adults can do the same. Please do not pass these bills. The health guidance on the pandemic has helped keep St. Louis as safe as possible, and that safety is what allows essential aspects of the economy to continue. Don't let us become Jefferson County or other places in the state where test positivity rates have reached almost 50% and hospitals have become overwhelmed. From Kathleen McFarland. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I am a lifelong resident of St. Louis County, and I am writing today to implore the council to reject bills 220, 222, and 223. These bills irresponsibly politicize what is a serious unprecedented public health issue. Many medical and public health experts, including the CDC, WHO, and the St. Louis Public Health agree on the importance of wearing face masks as an effective measure to curb the spread of COVID-19. I have a teenage daughter with asthma and an 88-year-old parents who live in the county as well. My daughter and parents are at all risk, are all at high risk for serious illness or complications if they become infected with COVID-19. It is imperative that others wear masks around my loved ones or any high-risk individuals. All it takes is one infected person to cough or sneeze around them for them to be put at risk. Masks help decrease that risk. My family lives in Florence. You are no doubt well aware that North County area has the highest number of COVID cases in the county, far above the average for the county as a whole. The mask mandate and occupancy limits are the only thing that have made me comfortable enough to go to restaurants, stores, etc., and support the local economy. If the mask mandate and/or occupancy limits are lifted, my family will no longer go out in public. Simply put, you cannot have a healthy economy without a healthy population. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in uncomfortable position, and businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. Wearing a mask is a simple, easy thing to do to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. It is the very least we can do to protect those in our community. Limiting occupant, occupancy inside of businesses helps prevent widespread outbreaks. There are lives at risk. This is not a political game. Please do not treat it as such. I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. From Sherry Hartnett. Dear St. Louis County Council members, please, please, please vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. I really feel that it has saved lives. Most of our employees are working from home right now because even with the mask and public mandates, they don't feel safe. Putting these mandates into effect early is why the county was able to slow down the spread of this life-threatening virus. Experts agree that masking is critical in the fight against COVID-19. Businesses will feel that they can't force employees or customers to wear masks in their place of business. My family and I will stop going out to make purchases and order from Amazon instead, actually harming county business. My sister is battling cancer and is immunocompromised. If I'm not protected by my public health mandates, I will not be able to be with her and help her through this difficult time. Once again, please vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. From Lisa Bursak. I am voicing how important the mask mandate is in St. Louis County. I work in a supermarket, and in the beginning of the mask pandemic, I was seeing so many of my coworkers fall ill to this virus. Not only were they falling ill, but their children and spouses with compromised immune systems as well. The masks have definitely helped curb that. I am proud to be an essential worker. This has required to not interact with my parents. My dad has severe kidney disease and is a cancer survivor. My coworkers are not in that position. Most of them are here because they need health insurance to care for spouses and children with compromised immune systems. Even with masks, they go to great pains on a daily basis to protect their family because they, like me, are proud of the work we do. If masks are not enforced, we are risking everyone, children, elderly, and people who cannot battle this virus. In North County, our numbers are high enough. We do not need to add to that. Sickness has spread rapidly through Jefferson County and St. Charles since schools opened. Neither has mask mandates, and residents have exposed us, exposed us over and over by coming into St. Louis County for work and so forth. I am a registered voter as well and plan on wearing my mask to the polls. Please, I ask you not to repeal this mask mandate. We need you as our elected officials to protect us. Thank you.
Continuing with the comments, this one is from Mark Watts. I heard that the council is considering removing the mask mandates today. Please remove the mandates. I work in a retail environment exposed to many people during my daily workout, and here's what I have observed. Most face masks, face coverings are bogus. The majority are just cloth coverings that don't stop any viral transmission, e.g., bandanas, homemade towels, etc. Most allow breath to escape regardless of the type, and since they are unsealed around the face, and it's why people complain about their glasses fogging. Many people are wearing them incorrectly, below the nose, taking them down to talk on their cell phones under their chin, pull them away to be able to talk. I've even seen them taking them off to sneeze and then putting them back up. Based on May 21st, New England Journal of Medicine article, it is known that masks in retail store environments are essentially useless. Some of the supposedly most vulnerable people are free to not wear masks by stating that they have a medical condition by the way they feel it's okay to visit stores any time of day. Surrounding counties in the city don't have to, these tight mandates, and are doing better than St. Louis County in case rates deaths. Obviously, there is more transmission than wearing, not wearing masks. Frankly, people are choosing to go outside St. Louis County to eat and shop rather than to stay within the county. You're strangling our businesses and tax base with this shutdown, even the WHO is now against lockdowns. The county executive has not set clear thresholds for when restrictions would ever be removed. This is just wrong. Please repeal the mandates and let the businesses decide what they want to do. Next, from Lawrence Weintraub. I strongly urge the council to reject bills 220, 222, and 223. Feeling safe is the most important reason why I wear a mask. I want to know that I can feel safe patronizing businesses that require all customers and staff to wear masks, and this will determine if I patronize these establishments. Ask the folks who work every day with the public if they think it's okay to drop the mask requirement. Also, I'm 67, have a pacemaker, and have had cancer, yet I'm in perfect health, and I want to stay that way. Masks undoubtedly help to control the virus spread, and wearing masks should remain a county requirement until further testing and evidence prove otherwise. This is from Amy Rome. As a concerned St. Louis County resident, I urge you to reject bills 220, 222, and 223. Politics should not enter into the county's role in protecting the health and safety of its citizens. It has been proven that wearing masks protects people, and that should be the first and most important role of the council. Businesses need guidance too, so that they aren't put into both unsafe and potentially dangerous situations if customers get belligerent. Just vote no on these bills to protect our community. Next is Nancy Solomon. I am writing to urge council members to vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223, and continue measures, including mandating masks, to protect our public health. Our public health experts tell us wearing a mask is perhaps the most important thing we can do to fight COVID-19 until a vaccine is readily available. My son and daughter-in-law recently returned to their home in Brooklyn, New York, where they were amazed to see everyone wearing masks outdoors as well as indoors. This is a simple way to protect ourselves and the health of others, and they were pleasantly surprised to see how universally accepted mask-wearing has become and how businesses there are starting to come back. They feel safe in a place that they had fled six months ago because they felt their health was threatened. I feel comfortable shopping in St. Louis County stores and dining in St. Louis County restaurants because of the mask mandate. I have not ventured to neighboring St. Charles County, which has no such mandate in place. Very simply, masks stop the spread of disease, and requiring them takes the burden off of businesses that could find it difficult to balance enforcing such a mandate with losing customers like me. I appreciate the well-reasoned approach that St. Louis County has taken to stop the spread of COVID-19, and I want to see it continue. This requires giving the county health department and county executive the power to restrict the spread of disease during a pandemic. For this reason, I want to see you all vote no on bills 220, 222, and 223. Your vote could save my life and the lives of countless others, including my 90 and 87-year-old parents. This comes from Jocelyn Fundokus. I strongly urge the council to reject bills 220, 222, and 223. We need to put our, protecting our health above politics. I want my family to be safe, and it is too much of a burden to ask people to enforce the mask mandate themselves. Unless it's mandatory, people will be confused at odds about it and ultimately not as safe. Next is Travis Williams. I'm writing to oppose bills 220, 222, and 223. Combine these bills would create an environment that could lead to a resurgence of COVID-19 in our communities and further jeopardize the health and safety of us all and delay the economic recovery that is desperately needed. I work in an industry that is deemed essential as I support restaurants throughout the county. Removing mask mandates and occupancy limits might lead to short-term recovery of the economy, but will also lead to a spread of the virus and necessitate reenacting those safety measures and further slow the process of eliminating the virus and delaying our economic recovery. Beyond all of this, I am fearful for the health and safety of my family and friends. We rely on everyone in the community making a shared sacrifice to defeat this pandemic. I view masks I wear as my patriotic duty to keep everyone around me safe. My family is fortunate enough. Uh-oh. All right. I'm sorry, I'm being told I may, my signal may have been lost. Are people hearing me still?
Yeah, thank you. You did go quiet for a second, Christopher, but you're back on.
Okay, good. Am I going too fast for anyone? I'm trying to go fast, thinking you may want this to be over. But if I, if you can't understand me, please let me know.
I think, I think your pace is just fine.
Okay, good. I'll try to keep it up then.
Yeah, you do have a good voice for it, for it. Councilwoman Gray and I both agree.
Oh, well, thank you. You guys are very kind. Appreciate that. All right, now watch me screw this up. Continuing from Travis Williams. Beyond all of this, I am fearful for the health and safety of my family and friends. We rely on everyone in the community making a shared sacrifice to defeat this pandemic. I view the masks I wear as my patriotic duty to keep everyone around me safe. My family is fortunate enough to be able to keep our children home and safe during this time and are able to assist our neighbors by watching our daughter in the mornings, eliminating the need of, the risk of needing to put her in daycare. Rescinding these mandates puts me at risk in my work and forces that risk upon the rest of my family and beyond. Drops in infection rates are proof that these measures are Drops in infection rates are proof that these measures are working and must remain in place to ensure we are able to return to normal as quickly as possible. Now, from Elizabeth Rahel. I am a county resident, eighty-nine-hundred Lawn Avenue, Brentwood, Missouri, and I do not want the COVID safety procedures ended until it is scientifically safe to do so. I appreciate the reasoned approach that Dr. Page has taken and hope that he continues to lead in the way that he has so far. Next, Catherine McPhail. I am writing today in support of the mask mandate in St. Louis City and County. I am not going to go on and on about the science behind mask wearing and how it works. The CDC has made that information readily available, and it has been presented in easily digestible and understandable ways. It is unthinkable to assert that mask wearing is an invasion of personal rights. Taking care of your neighbor is both an American and Christian value. Looking out for the less fortunate and vulnerable is the right thing to do. Some individuals protesting mask wearing are not too proud to ask for donations for medical treatments, preferred parking for veterans, pregnant women, or speak out against a woman's right to manage her own body and health, but the second they are asked to wear a mask to protect those, to protect those same people from an illness with no known cure or vaccine, it is, quote, "their body and their choice," unquote. You cannot have it both ways. The hypocrisy of the anti-mask groups is deafening, and if you are sick enough to need a health exempt exemption, you probably shouldn't be out in a pandemic of a respiratory illness anyway. I personally had COVID a few weeks back. It was the sickest I have ever been. I could barely breathe. I couldn't take a full deep breath. I could only sleep reclined but not long flat. I didn't have the energy to walk around my house or take a shower. How did I catch it? I caught it from my roommate who had an interaction with a coworker in a maskless situation. I have been taking every precaution, every defense I can against COVID. I have not gone anywhere without a mask. I have washed my groceries and done delivery or pickup. I have worked from home. Caught this from one careless individual who had a maskless interaction with an asymptomatic carrier. I will not stop wearing a mask. I will not stop encouraging my coworkers, friends, and family to wear a mask. I can only hope that businesses continue requiring masks, but the protection of those decisions is on the line. We have seen the violence that can stem from the removal of these protections, and if we are not careful, they will come here. Next, from Tanya or Tanya Vedentham. As a healthcare provider, I'm sorry, I missed the first sentence. The first sentence is this. Public health is being politicized, and this will do no one any good. The health of St. Louis County residents are at stake, and I so strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. As a healthcare provider, I know that things like wearing masks coupled with social distancing work in the fight against COVID. If you look at the data, the states and the countries around the world that have universal mask mandates in place have shown slower growth rates. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases, and with the flu season upon us, it is even more important that we take measures to protect ourselves as well as the healthcare system so that we do not get into an overwhelming situation that some hospital systems faced a few months back. I want to see continued progress towards declining positivity rates and the safe reopening of schools and businesses. Wearing masks can get us there. Our local economy will suffer even more if public safety measures are lifted. I have many close friends in St. Louis that own restaurants and other small businesses. Lifting the mandate will actually put those businesses at risk. If the government does not require such safety precautions, the pressure is on the business to enforce safety measures such as masking. That is a huge burden on them. Lifting those mandates puts not only the patrons at risk, but also the workers. If lifted, I will stop visiting these local businesses, and I suspect others will do the same. Masks save lives. Masking is a simple, easy, and effective way to contain the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Thanks for your time. Next, from Susan Novak. I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents by rejecting bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. By lifting the mandate, I will no longer feel safe to leave my homes to take care of the essentials of living, trips to the grocery store, post office, and doctor appointments, which I have been able to do since the mandate went into place. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. In our state, the areas with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Next, from Monica Widger or Widger. I would like you to support bills two twenty and two twenty-three. Going forward, decisions should be made with input from many checks and balances. I care about the health of my family, friends, and St. Louis County at large, and feel that the right decisions will be made with the whole county council having input. More input does not mean that the very best decisions cannot be reached, but there is no reason that critical decisions should be in the hands of just a very few. Please correct this oversight. Next, from Sharon Rosenbloom. As a senior citizen in St. Louis County, seventy-five years old, I urge you to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three, which if passed will endanger the health and welfare of our elderly. When masking is shown to be a major deterrent of the coronavirus and with social distancing is as helpful as a vaccine in the spread of the virus, why would we not keep the mask mandate and such thing in place? Missouri is one of the hotspot states, and those of us at risk will not be able to participate in the local economy and help small business. My husband and I have not been to a local restaurant since March, but, but we do pick up. If the mask mandate is dropped, we will no longer do that. I do not frequent malls, but do shop online and will not do that any longer if I cannot safely do curbside pickup for returns. While this may seem like an insignificant gesture, if thousands of senior citizens join me, it will have an enormous impact. I'm talking about seniors who are affluent and fuel restaurant dining and area shopping. It is your duty as representatives of our community to keep the citizens safe. Causing the spread of the virus is not what you should be doing. This cannot be a political issue. Public safety is an issue for all of us. I'm counting on you to be prudent and safe for all of us. Thank you. And Kathy Brech. Please consider the public health of all your constituents when voting on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. I implore you to vote against these bills and to allow science and public health, not political speak, drive this. Science and facts tell us universal masking is effective, is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. It's simple. States with mask mandates such as our next-door neighbor Illinois have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Case in point is a very recent data released. Illinois's case rate is nearly half Missouri's, and Illinois has doubled the population, twelve-point-seven million residents to Missouri's six-point-one million. Masks work. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. Masks work. If mask mandates are lifted in St. Louis County, my family will have to discontinue shopping and eating out locally. Look what's happening in Jefferson County, in the Springfield and Joplin areas. Cases are skyrocketing. How will our area hospitals without a mask mandate fare with a potential surge in COVID cases? I worry for the healthcare workers and the support people in healthcare settings who also need to go about their daily lives. They are at risk of contracting COVID if they are out shopping for their necessities and then taking it back to their patients. I guess they, along with many, will start ordering necessities from Amazon. Wearing a mask is a simple thing. It's not about individual rights. It's about public health. It's about protecting our most vulnerable population and our essential workers. It's about our economy and knocking out the virus so we can go back about our daily lives without the risk of contracting, passing along the virus. Do what's right. Vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. And finally, from Ann Lowenstein or Lowenstein. It's mercifully short. Masks save lives. Masks are important. I feel so much safer in St. Louis County and city than in the rest of Missouri because of the mask requirement. Please reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three.
Continuing from Susie Farron. With Missouri one of the COVID hotspots in the nation, I strongly urge you to keep the mask mandate in St. Louis County. The only way to slow the spread of COVID-19 until a vaccine is provided is to mandate that people wear masks. Please vote to continue the mask mandate. The health of our citizens is at stake. Thank you, Susie Farron.
From Wendy Richards. Public health should not be politicized. Decisions regarding health and safety during COVID-19 pandemic and other public health crises should be made by those trained in public health and safety like doctors and epidemiologists. Politicians should not be able to overrule public health rules for political reasons. Masks are necessary for all of our safety at this time. No one enjoys wearing masks, but it isn't about enjoyment, it is about safety and necessity. It's not about personal freedom either. If it were, then we would also need freedom to go without clothes in public or to not wear shoes in a store or a restaurant. But the fact is, we have always had rules about what is appropriate and safe to wear and to do in public and shared spaces such as stores and restaurants. The majority of people support mask wearing and support medical professionals making decisions regarding public health issues. Those disgruntled anti-maskers are outspoken, and you should not let their ill-advised and selfish petitions outweigh the good of all the people in our county. The county council should not be able to overrule public health experts regarding the pandemic. Public safety is not a political issue. You all need to stop trying to make it one. Your job as elected officials is to act in the best interests of your constituents and in the interest of our health and safety. Just because people complain about masks or other pandemic-related limitations does not mean you should lift them. That would be a failure to do your duty. Science is real. COVID is dangerous. Masks make a difference. Listen to the scientists and doctors, not the politics. Thank you.
From Allison Graves. I'm writing to urge you to extend the mask mandate in the county. My son is finally starting kindergarten in person in Kirkwood, and our family's top priority is to keep him healthy and in school. We always wear masks in public, but we need to know, we also know that our mask wearing is to protect other people. We need to know that others in the community will do their part to protect us. We all need to prioritize children in school and give them the best chance to succeed through the winter. Please keep the mask mandate for the good of our children, finally going back to school. Thank you.
From Kathy Jones Holmes. I live in North County, and I'm opposed to limitations or overruling the emergency powers of the Department of Health during the worst pandemic in history. Makes no sense, and it shows a lack of science-based decision-making. Missouri is currently a hotspot for COVID-19 infections, and to reverse course now for the sake of sports and politics is lunacy. It will negatively impact our frontline workers in stores, food industry, healthcare providers, and teachers. I hope these bills are rejected, and if some, and if by some strange reason they pass, it is my hope that Dr. Sam Page will veto said bill. Thank you.
From Mary Wissman. I'm writing in response to the three bills requiring a supermajority to approve the declarations of emergency or public health and safety. I am appalled at the politicization of this pandemic in this country and in particular this state. It is absurd and disgraceful that politicians are putting their political ambitions above the health and safety of their constituents. I was so proud the way the St. Louis area responded to the pandemic, but now it appears the St. Louis response will be politicized as well. I trust science and public health officials to get us out of this pandemic, not politicians. I oppose these three bills and urge you not to pass them.
From Lorraine Simone. As a retired citizen with pre-existing health conditions living in St. Louis County for forty-four years, I want you to know that this is the first time I have ever written a letter to the St. Louis County Council. That is how important the COVID crisis is to me and my extended family, all of whom live in St. Louis County. The specific reason for my message to you is regarding the three bills that will be considered today. The coronavirus situation in and around St. Louis area was frightening months ago as we all face this unprecedented health crisis for the first time in our lives. We made drastic changes to our everyday lives for ourselves personally and to those in our community. Wearing masks, social distancing, washing hands as public health scientists have directed. In addition, the coronavirus has caused significant changes to family life. Limited gatherings, no family vacations this year, canceled holiday gatherings with extended family and more. Circumstances have improved in St. Louis County, and I am thankful. We are seeing these results. These outcomes are a result of the efforts of all in St. Louis County who followed the science-based policies as directed by public health experts. However, in surrounding counties, we are now seeing upticks in COVID cases, in surges in rural areas where public health and safety requirements were not implemented. I trust our local health experts as well as the public health experts from the coronavirus task force and the Center for Disease Control. Their extensive academic background and their experience with public health matters have prepared them for this COVID situation to make these difficult decisions for all of us, our health and safety. I appreciate all the work that you do for St. Louis County citizens, but I believe decisions regarding health and safety measures should be based on science-based policies that are directed by public health experts.
From Jeff Rosenblatt. Please vote against council bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. As a seventy-seven-year-old man, I am vulnerable to the virus but need to go out in public to get necessities. Please vote to continue with measures to protect my health and the health of other St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited lower, slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. Lifting public safety measures will in fact hurt our economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and I fear that without the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will not, nor will I allow my family to continue to visit local businesses as I just can't take the risk. I will probably not be the only one who feels this way. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population, including me and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three.
From Brian Connor. Please accept the two million grant and funds for the board of elections during. There is simply no reason not to accept this fund. Other counties in the area are accepting the funds, and St. Louis County has a duty to do what is right and to accept the grant funds. Thank you for doing your best to make all voters and election workers. I'm sorry. Let me start that. Thank you for doing your best to make sure all voters and election workers can do their patriotic duty to vote.
From Stephen Brameyer. I'm a St. Louis County resident. I improve and feel safer with the current policies and mandates for wearing a mask in public both in St. Louis County and city. I have been closely following Dr. Garza and his reports from the St. Louis Metropolitan Task Force. He consistently urges people to wear masks, practice social distancing, and hand washing. I look to my government to guide and require behavior that is for the common good of all. We cannot loosen restrictions. Please vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three.
From Charles Allen. Bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three send the wrong message to the public. Please reject them. Wearing masks may be inconvenient, but it is essential to public safety. Not wearing one only signals disrespect and recklessness. It is the triumph of the selfish over civic responsibility. Taxes are not optional. Military issues orders, not guidance. If we take the virus seriously, we must require masks.
From Joanne Leach. I urge you to keep the mask mandate and other safety rulings made by public health specialists. My husband and I are seniors and would feel very threatened by even going to the grocery store if masks and social distancing were not required. Missouri is in a second or third phase of the pandemic right now.
From Debbie Monford. I do not believe the county council should be able to overrule public health experts and stop mandate, mandating people to wear masks. All the health experts agree mask wearing and social distancing are key to keeping the number of people infected low. Now, most schools are opening back up for in-school learning. Many sports are also starting back up. So it is really important everyone wears a mask. Measures that have been put in place have kept St. Louis County with lower numbers than many other areas of Missouri. People have followed the rules. They aren't really hard, and it has paid off. To change that now would be a tragedy. Let's take politics out of the health arena and let the medical workers direct us. Then we can actually help one another. It will make everyone's life better to continue on with the mandates we have been using. Please do not stop them.
From Lisa Riad. Please vote to limit the
Please vote to limit the Excuse me. Please vote to limit the unilateral power of the county executive by approving Bills 222 and 223. Our country was built on the principles of checks and balances within the government and limiting the authority of any one person in a governing position. To allow one person to have unilateral authority to make policy decisions that last with no oversight or sunset provision is antithetical to the principles of our democracy our country was founded on. It is, quite frankly, hard to believe that there is even a debate over whether or not these bills should pass. Please vote in favor of Bills 222 and 223 so there is a check and balance system over executive orders issued by any county executive. And from Terry Jacobson. Please keep enforcing the mask mandate for St. Louis County. I feel you've been looking out for the best interests of everyone with this decision. I also believe it is in the best interest of the community to also enforce restricting limits on how many people in a building, restaurant, bar, or gathering. As a small business owner, I believe if we continue to enforce limits on occupancy and wearing masks, it will be in the best interests of the St. Louis County's economy. Respectfully, Terry Jacobson.
Continuing with public forum. From Jonah Moore. Hello, I am asking you today to please not remove the mask mandate. I have had to skip sport seasons and have had to stay home from school since March. While this virus has taken its toll on everyone, wearing a mask has proven to stop the spread by science and getting rid of the mandate is an easy way to drag this pandemic on for several more months. My mother works in a grocery store and could easily get infected with the virus by people who refuse to do the bare minimum of wearing a mask. Removing this mandate is unsafe and will cause people to act reckless and unsafe in a time where what we need is safety. From Jean J. Gibson. I strongly request you consider keeping the mask ordinance and occupancy limits as is. Removing or reducing them will move contrary to our goal as a community of suppressing COVID-19. People are moving indoors more with the cooler weather, and that is only going to serve to expand the opportunity for the virus to hurt more and more people. I am a resident of St. Louis County. Thank you for your consideration. From Dale Senior. The bills before you today about the county's response to the coronavirus will make life worse for county residents, not better, and will make the issue a partisan fight that should not be happening at a time when cooperation should be your first concern. As virus cases increase, the importance of wearing a mask and taking other protective measures become more vital than ever if we are ever to get out of this quarantine mess. Please do not pass Bills 220, 222, and 223 and keep the focus where it belongs, the health of St. Louis County residents. From James Kalishman. I am a resident of St. Louis County. I'm a medically sophisticated person and am well-informed about the continued presence and spread of COVID-19 in St. Louis County. I helped to care for my 90-year-old mother, and evidence-based science shows that masks reduce the spread and contagion of COVID-19. The proof is there when you compare the numbers in St. Louis County versus neighboring areas where no masks are required and the virus is spreading unabated. I'm very concerned about the changes being considered today that could lead to a reduction in the ability to institute or control mask usage. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on Bills 220, 222, and 223. Please support public health and allow our leaders to require or mandate masks in all public spaces until the science shows us that it is safe for all. Respectfully submitted. From Julia Greensfelder. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I am a Wash U senior. I decided to spend the semester in St. Louis due to the strong COVID-19 policies supported by the local government and absent throughout much of the state, as well as to spend time with my family residing in St. Louis. However, I'm becoming more disappointed as the year trudges on. As such, I strongly urge the council to reject Bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are a terrible politicization of public health. Instead, I urge the council to continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID-19. States with mask mandates have exhibited slower growth rates compared to those that did not. Universal masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID-19 cases. Lifting public safety measures will in fact hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and I fear that without the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons, especially students. If lifted, it will not allow Wash U students who enter mandatory quarantines if they get sick to continue to visit local businesses or relatives relatives like mine. Without the safety measures, you are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on Bills 220, 222, and 223. From Michael Evester. Council, please do not vote to eliminate mask mandate and roll back on occupancy limits within St. Louis City and St. Louis County. Signed, a concerned citizen. From Joe Broomer. Who is the moron that suggested that the mask order be lifted because they need to resign immediately? You don't like the mask order, then move to St. Charles or some other backwater county. What an idiotic idea. From Jessica Garnreider. Dear council members, please reject Bills 220, 222, and 223 and keep current public health measures in place in order to protect the health of our community. Mask mandates have proven to drastically reduce the spread of this disease. Because of the mask mandate and other safety policies we have followed in our county, my children have recently been able to resume their youth sports and will soon be able to return to school in person. Businesses have been able to reopen and operate safely. Lifting these measures will risk undoing all of the progress we have made in this community. In fact, the director of the CDC, Robert Redfield, stated that if everyone in the US wore a mask, the coronavirus pandemic could be under control within four to eight weeks. Masks work. My husband is a physician at a children's hospital in St. Louis and has seen firsthand how severely COVID can affect children. He has also seen how masks and other public safety measures have allowed many of his patients to safely attend school in person. As we have seen throughout this pandemic, getting kids back in school safely is a key component of reopening our economy. Please continue to keep our community safe by voting no on Bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. From Lisa Smalligan. Dear council members, my name is Lisa and I just turned 60. I have been working as an essential worker at, not one, but two jobs since the beginning of this pandemic. Daily, I have been exposed to the general public since this all began. I truly believe that wearing a mask has kept my family and myself safe through these trying times. Both of my daughters have been working as essential workers as well, and we as a family have been diligent with wearing masks as we have children with autoimmune disorders and their very existence depends on our diligence. Wearing masks is not just for our own personal safety, but for the safety of others as well. We as workers must wear a mask all day, every day, at work, and to ask a shopper to put one on for several minutes for our protection is not asking a lot for the safety and protection of all employees and our families. We have made sacrifices from day one, and to ask the public to honor our sacrifices by being courteous and wearing a mask while shopping is the very least that can be done. We essential workers have not been given the consideration or appreciation during all of this, so I ask that you take that into consideration, that our only gratitude would be the continuation of the mask mandate at this time. Thank you. From Hillard R. Omen. I for one absolutely am opposed to modifying any mask procedure. We need all the protection we are able to legislate, and any effort to decrease this is unforgivable. Thank you. From Mary Ludwig. I'm very proud of how Sam Page has handled COVID-19 in my county. His medical background could not have been more useful as it has been these past seven months. He has dutifully followed all advice from virologists. I am behind him 100%. I am a retired RN. I do not think our county council has enough knowledge to override him. Scientists have stated wearing masks is 95% effective against coronavirus. Sam Page has made smart, but sometimes unpopular decisions about group interactions such as allowing sports or percentage of restaurant capacity. I fully support him as an RN and as a mom. My mom was in Pfizer's nursing center in Fenton for four years. The care was excellent. As of today, there are no cases of the virus. I do not want the council to change how the nursing homes report current cases. We must be fair to our parents and community. I support Dr. Page as a daughter. Mr. Trakers is my councilman. I do not support him. My husband, Richard Ludwig, supports me on my opinions. Thank you for your time. From Maggie Donnelly. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I strongly urge the council to reject Bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are a terrible politicization of public health. The pandemic has already created so much hardship in our region. We need to continue to be smart in how we reduce the spread to avoid even worse health and economic impacts. Despite being a healthy 34-year-old, I have been going through several medical procedures during the pandemic. During this time, I have only felt safe shopping at my local stores and picking up food from local restaurants because I know people are required to wear masks. That went away, I would not frequent these businesses. I want to support local, but my health, my family's health, and my neighbor's health matters most. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge you all to vote no on Bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. From Karen Dury. I'm writing to ask that all council members support Bills 220, 222, and 223. There is no reason one individual should be making all these decisions. There has to be checks and balances or the system will not work. The cases are down, the children are getting back to school and sports. Now we need to continue lifting restrictions on local businesses that are struggling to survive. Everyone knows the risks associated with COVID and can make their own decision on how to proceed. Finally, and unrelated to the passing of the bills mentioned above, children shouldn't be forced to wear masks while sitting at school or playing a sport. They, with their parents, should be given a choice based on what they believe the risks to be. The CDC numbers tell the story for the younger generation, and it shows that they are barely affected by this virus. Thank you. From Sharon Chitarn. Please reject Bills 220, 222, and 223. Please keep the safety of St. Louis County residents paramount. Keep businesses' business needs paramount. If masks are not mandated, people will not feel safe going to stores, etc. I certainly will not go into the stores. As it is, my granddaughter now has COVID and our family is very frightened for her. When I wear a mask, I keep you safer, and when you wear a mask, you keep me safer. Medical knowledge and past history show that masks help prevent the spread of airborne viruses. Again, please reject Bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. And from Caroline Miller. To the county council, I strongly urge the council to reject Bills 220, 222, and 223 as they are blatant attempts to politicize scientifically-proven effective methods to halt the spread of the coronavirus. Please follow the science and allow proven effective measures to remain in place without renewal every 15 days by a supermajority. Respectfully submitted.
Hi, my name is Nick Dagler. I'm taking over for Christopher. I'm with Spiritus St. Louis Airport, and I will be continuing the comments. Our first one is from Katie Kearns. I request that you maintain all current masking requirements. It is unsafe to be in spaces with others without a mask. Additionally, businesses will suffer with clients and customers being unable and unwilling to enter their space as some will not be wearing masks and all will be at great risk. Thank you for considering the health of all. Next comment is from Andrea Goldstein. Rabbi Andrea Goldstein. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I strongly urge the council to reject Bills 220, 222, and 223. Instead, I believe the council should continue with measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents that include requiring masks in indoor spaces, encouraging social distancing, at least six feet apart, and limiting the occupancy limits in door establishments. These policies have made me proud to be a resident of St. Louis County. Medical and public health experts continue to emphasize the importance of public masking, stating that universal masking is affecting and curbing the spread of COVID-19. This has made me and my family feel safe about going out to more stores and venues than we had already early on in the pandemic. If these policies are not continued, my family and I and most of our friends will return to having groceries delivered and not visiting public locations. COVID-19 has impacted my community in difficult ways. As a rabbi at congregation Sherry Emmett, the largest synagogue in Missouri, located in Creve Court, we have had to change so many of our policies. Members have not been inside our buildings since mid-March because of our tradition teaches that there is no greater mandate than saving the life than the saving of a life and putting the health of the community above all else. While this has been hard for our members, we have enormous support for these policies because they understand the severity of the pandemic. It would be a huge disappointment to know that we are making sacrifices as a religious community that our county government is not willing to enforce. Masking is simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID-19, and I strongly urge all of you to vote no on Bills 220, 222, and 223. Thank you. Next comment is from Spencer Toder. Forgive me if you receive this twice from me now, but the language of the response that I received yesterday implied that it must be sent today and not yesterday. St. Louis County Council, on behalf of myself, my wife, and my son, I implore you to continue social distancing guidelines and mask mandates in accordance with the science that will keep us safe. I run a biotechnology startup out of St. Louis, and one of the things I've been proudest of is our leadership's focus on science-backed response to COVID-19 virus. We understand that restrictions that might seem imposing to some, but these policies are a small price to pay to keep our families and communities safe and healthy. Our response must be backed by science. These policies have been proven to work. Mask mandates, closures of certain businesses, and other COVID-19 mitigation strategies implemented over the summer led to a 75% drop in new coronavirus cases in Arizona, according to a new report from the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. Further, when the state's stay-at-home order was lifted at the start of June, but such measures weren't put in place, the number of new COVID-19 cases increased 151% within two weeks, according to the report. As mounting evidence has shown, widespread implementation and enforcement of sustained community mitigation measures, including mask-wearing, can help prevent COVID-19 spread, the authors wrote in the report. It is not too much to ask to maintain common sense policies that have been proven to work. Please, for my family and for yours, follow science. Regards. Our next is from Rebecca Jacobs. My name is Rebecca Jacobs and I live in Olivet. I strongly request the council to keep the mask mandate in place, at least until a vaccine is widely available. I believe we all need to support legislation to help protect us from those who would politicize the issue. Please keep St. Louis safer by extending the mask mandate. Respectfully. Next speaker is Serena Whitley. I work as an essential worker, and you allowing to stop masks in stores while put me and my family at risk. I have two twins who were born prematurely, and I have elderly parents over the age of 60. I don't want to be another statistic. Please keep the mask mandate in place to protect the workers and customers. Next speaker is Daniel Mirt. Dear St. Louis County Council members, like everyone submitting my request via email instead of in person, I am doing so because of the unmitigated spread of COVID-19 through the country, especially so in Missouri. Please continue to enforce a mask mandate in St. Louis County until our new positive cases significantly decrease to a safe level. St. Louis County leads the state in total COVID cases, and it is our responsibility to slow the spread both within our own community as well as in between neighboring St. Louis City, which has slowed the spread of COVID with its mask mandate, and St. Charles County, which is now ranked third in the state and has yet to mandate masks. Admittedly, no one likes to wear a mask. However, the sooner everyone gets on the same page with wearing a mask, the sooner we can get back to normal, and I won't need to worry about my immunocompromised niece. She was diagnosed with an autoimmune disease when she was 18 months old and has been on a variety of immunosuppressants the last 11 years. Both of her parents are considered essential workers and interact with customers on a daily basis. I am terrified that my sister or brother-in-law will contract COVID while stocking shelves from an unmasked customer, and Olivia will pay the ultimate price. She's in eighth grade and deserves a chance to thrive just like everyone else. Personally, I do not understand how wearing a mask for a few minutes while sharing the same space with others in our community is a burden. Countries like South Korea were extremely successful in slowing the spread of COVID. USA and South Korea had our first positive COVID cases on the same day. South Korea has less than 25,000 cases and less than 500 deaths. We have more than that in Missouri. The difference is they believe in science and took simple measures like wearing a dang mask. Please continue to enforce a mask mandate so that we can all get back to normal life in the not-too-distant future. Regards. Next speaker is Jean Buchanan. Please reject Bills 220, 222, and 223. Reject the effort to politicize our public health. I know the anti-maskers are swamping with comments, but we need a strong leadership on this. Masks are protecting us so that we can have a bit of normalcy, and the majority of citizens support the mask mandate. If you cave on this, many of us will quit venturing out to businesses because we don't want to be subjected to the exhilarations if anti-maskers. Strong leadership allows our businesses to require masks. Please vote no on Bills 220, 222, and 223. Next speaker is Vanita Alexander. I write you as a concerned citizen and physician. Please be Please be aware that our mask mandate is responsible for the difference between a positivity rate of fourteen percent in Missouri and a four point four percent in St. Louis County. No one likes wearing masks or even being told what to do, but this is a sacrifice that we must make to proceed with our normal activities. We must wear the masks to keep our children in school, keep our stores open, and keep our hospitals manageable. Unfortunately, there is much that remains unknown about SARS-CoV- two, but we do have a very clear evidence that masks are effective in diminishing transmission. We must put politics aside for a moment and listen to our public health experts on this matter. Ultimately, we have all the same desire to move past this pandemic, and masks are undoubtedly the quickest way to achieve this goal. As a physician, I believe it is imperative to help with the public health response to COVID- nineteen in St. Louis County. It has come to my attention that St. Louis County Council is preparing to vote on passed legislation that would limit the county executive's power. Councilmember Fitch has introduced legislation that could potentially end any executive orders after fifteen days, which will require all orders to be voted on by the council. This would include the county mandate and any orders regulating restaurants, stores, schools, and sports. Dr. Page's executive orders have been closely followed following recommendations by the Department of Health and evidence-based recommendations to public benefit public health. All of this could change if the bill passes. I am opposed to this bill, which Councilmember Tim Fitch plans to introduce on Tuesday, ten thirteen, twenty twenty. I feel that it is imperative as physicians to publicly support the mask mandate and other health measures. Thank you for your consideration. Next speaker is Sarah Bonner. Please keep mask mandates and occupancy limits in place in St. Louis County. These are measures that save lives. Follow the science, especially as we enter late fall and winter. Our next speaker is Jason Spadetti. I would like to encourage St. Louis County Council to avoid politicizing the public health of our region and keep the current mask mandate and other pandemic ordinances like crowd size and limits in place. The science clearly supports using masks and these other measures as the most effective tools available to every citizen to do their part in protecting the health of our community. The pandemic is not a political issue that will go away because one side's opinion is more popular than the other. It is a medical science issue that requires scientific fact-based solutions. Thank you. Next speaker is Tina Murtham. I'm writing to spend my support for continued mask mandates and occupancy limits during the COVID pandemic. In order to maximize health and safety of all citizens, please do not repeal these important mask mandates and occupancy limits. Our next speaker is David Levy. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I fully support limiting the power of the county executive and repealing the emergency delegation of power to return to the prior status quo to restore the constitutional system of checks and balances so that the sole power does not reside with the county executive. I urge council to vote in favor of bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Thank you. Next speakers are Keith and Becky Carey. It has been brought to our attention that there is a discussion on removing COVID safeguards. This is a terrible time to lessen our protocols as schools are returning. Maybe we should change one thing at a time for safety. Living in Kirkwood, we see a crowded downtown district. We all want to see our businesses survive, but without a mask mandate or social distancing or reduced occupancy, it will not be safe any longer to frequent our locally-owned businesses. Please do the right thing and not cave to the pressure of the loudest among us. Next speaker is Nicole Rich. In today's pandemic, I truly believe that St. Louis County has put the safety and health of its residents first and foremost, until now. Hearing that there are bills proposed that would effectively strip the power of the elected county executive and health department is extremely concerning. When did we make science and medical professionals political? The mask mandate was and is needed. Many St. Louis residents get up every day and risk not only their health, but the health of their family by going to work and making sure that your family has the goods and necessities needed to live. By stripping these powers and effectively taking away a mask mandate, you are risking the health of thousands of workers and our much-needed grocery stores as well as others. Remember that many of these workers go home to families, some of which are elderly, sick, or young children. Is this political stunt really worth their lives? I ask that you stop this nonsense and put the health and safety of the people that elected you first. Our next speaker is Alice Alt. Putting the county's health in the hands of a political body is the worst idea ever. Our healthcare belongs in the hands of healthcare professionals who follow science. Where the country stands now is COVID cases and deaths due to a failed leadership and too many people ignoring the science and health guidelines. Our country has fared relatively well because we have followed those guidelines. Putting health decisions in the hands of politicians makes no practical sense and is patently dangerous. No one will go to a government official for treatment advice on, say, tuberculosis. Yet you propose that government officials dictate the course of treatment on this virus and any other future disease we'll be confronting. Putting the health of our community in the hands of people with no knowledge of the subject is shocking and it's total lack of foresight. And finally, our last speaker for me is Jerry Ryan. Please do not overturn the mask ordinance. We definitely need this to keep the virus at bay. We can lessen some of the other restrictions, but please keep the mask mandate in place. It helps protect the people who work in all of the establishments that we frequent. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Continuing from Janice Fishman. I strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three as these bills are protecting our citizens like myself. I'm seventy-five years old and I don't know how I could leave my house if others aren't wearing masks. I go to the grocery store, doctor's appointments, outdoor restaurants, take my cat to the pet store to have his nails trimmed, to go for haircuts. I believe in the science that mask wearing greatly reduces the risk of contracting the COVID- nineteen virus. Does medical and public health experts agree? Without masks, I would therefore be housebound, further depressed, and not able to enjoy the few outings I take. Without the county mandating masks, I am very frightened that those I come into contact with who are not wearing a mask and who might not be a safe distance away will infect me. Please, I strongly encourage you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. From Helen Stolar. I'm a resident of St. Louis County in a state with rising COVID cases and deaths. I consider a dereliction of duty by the council to rescind the mandate for the wearing of masks. How does it hurt anyone to wear a mask indoors? We don't allow smoking indoors and no one considers that a violation of the rights. By lifting this mandate, we encourage further outbreak and contagion. Please leave this order in place for the good of our citizens. Thank you. From Penny Robinson. I urge the council to continue with all reasonable measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents, including mandatory use of masks. In my opinion, bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three represent the politicization of public health, and I urge you to reject these bills. While public health experts and medical experts don't always agree, they do agree on the importance of public masking and its effectiveness in curbing the spread of COVID- nineteen. We've learned that states with mask mandates are exhibiting slower growth rates compared to those without mask mandates. And as a result, thousands of COVID- nineteen cases have been prevented. Lifting public safety measures will hurt, not help, our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position. My concern is that without the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If the mandate is lifted, my family will not continue to visit local businesses without safety measures, including masks. We are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers at a time when we need them most by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. We are mandated to wear seatbelts and face with ticketing if we do not. Likewise, masking is not difficult, is easy, and has proved to be effective at containing the spread of COVID- nineteen. Please do not make this a political issue. I urge you all to please vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Thank you. From Stephanie Gross. Please note my strong stance against repealing the mask mandates and occupancy limits for St. Louis County. Thank you for all of your hard work. From Lazaroff. Lifting public safety measures will in fact hurt our local economy. By lifting the mandate, the county is placing businesses in an uncomfortable position, and I fear that without the government requiring safety precautions, businesses will not be able to enforce masking and other safety measures of their patrons. If lifted, I will not allow my family to continue to visit local businesses. I suspect others will do the same. Without the safety measures, we are endangering the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by unnecessarily exposing them to the virus. Masking is undeniably simple, easy, and effective at containing the spread of COVID- nineteen, and I strongly urge you to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. And from Cheryl Foster. I'm writing today as a very concerned citizen of District Six. It's critical that the public health experts are allowed to continue to do their jobs without interference from our elected officials. It saddens me the COVID- nineteen pandemic has been politicized and that many are allowing misinformation to influence critical decision-making that should be left to science and medical experts. I'm a mother of three children, two of whom are school age. You don't have to tell me how hard this has been. I consider myself very lucky as I've been able to work from home. Many parents don't have that luxury. We need to protect the most vulnerable in our community, the elderly and the immunocompromised. People on the front lines that have no choice but to interact with hundreds of people a day to support their own family. Our healthcare workers that must be ready to care for us when we fall ill. That means wearing a mask when in public, washing our hands, and employ social distancing, and avoiding large crowds. Our public healthcare experts have been reminding us how important it is and their recommendations, which have been implemented by Sam Page, are helping to keep us safe. We can't let misinformation about this dangerous virus put our community at risk, especially as flu season begins. It's irresponsible. Let the experts lead on this issue. Sincerely, Cheryl Foster.
I'm Betsy Kelly. I strongly urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Public health is not a political issue. It is a human issue. I urge the council to support measures to protect the health of St. Louis County residents. Medical and public health experts agree on the importance of public masking. Universal masking is effective at curbing the spread of COVID- nineteen. States that do not mandate masks have exhibited much higher rates of infection compared to those that did. Masking policies have prevented thousands of COVID- nineteen cases and deaths. Lifting public safety measures will farther the negative effects of this pandemic on our local economy. I fear that without continued government-required safety precautions, businesses will be on their own to enforce masking and other safety measures that will protect their patrons and employees. If lifted, I will avoid local businesses, as will my friends and family. Safety measures are proven to lessen the danger to the lives of our most vulnerable population and our essential workers by limiting their exposure to the virus. We all do things we may not necessarily like to make our lives safer. We wear seatbelts, we carry insurance against auto accidents, we make laws about driving speed and empower our police to enforce them. Masking is no more difficult than putting on a seatbelt and is as effective at saving lives. In this case, by containing the spread of COVID- nineteen. My mother died from COVID- nineteen in Arizona, where though she took all her safety precautions, masks were not mandated. Help protect our loved ones. I strongly urge you all to vote no on bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. Thank you. From Rita Brinkman. Keep the mask mandate. From Ryan Martin. Dear St. Louis County Council members, I'm a proud resident of St. Louis County and am writing to urge the council to reject bills two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-three. I have never written a message like this before, but the issue is simply too important for me to remain silent. Instead, I strongly encourage the council to continue with measures that have been put in place to protect the health and safety of county residents. As I'm sure you know, public health experts and medical professionals agree on the effectiveness of public masking and universal masking has been proven to be an effective strategy to slow the spread of COVID- nineteen. Data shows that states, counties, and cities with mask mandates have exhibited lower growth rates compared to those that do not require masks. To some, including a vocal anti-mask minority, masks may be inconvenient or uncomfortable and may feel like an infringement on personal freedom. But masks are effective and necessary to contain this virus. I have to believe that most constituents in the county understand that and are willing to make sacrifices to protect their health and the health of others. I have two young children and parenting during a pandemic has certainly been a challenge. In August, the kids were home because conditions in the county with respect to the pandemic did not allow for the safe reopening of the schools. However, over time, largely as a result of the mask impact and other safety protocols that the county put in place, conditions have improved and schools have slowly started to reopen, generally successfully. My preschooler was able to return to full-time in-person school in September, and my kindergartner who has really struggled with full-time online learning is super excited to be heading back to in-person school tomorrow. If we loosen existing safety measures, including the mask mandate, I fear that the rate of the spread will increase and conditions will deteriorate again, triggering more virus outbreaks at schools and ultimately school closures and the return to full-time online schooling to the detriment of children throughout the county. Also, because of the health and safety measures that are in place in the county, my family has become comfortable, frequenting restaurants and other county businesses. That will absolutely change if the mask mandate and other safety protocols are eliminated. I will not visit businesses that are not required or allowed to enforce a mask mandate, and that's four hundred words.
From David Deutsch. Dear Science Committee for interrupting, Madam Chair. If we're going to recess at five, that's in one minute.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. I just looked at my clock a second ago and I thought it was still a few more minutes out. Um, yes. Thank you, Councilwoman Dunaway. Let's go ahead and close off for today. Um, I want to make sure before we part that the login information and dial-in information is posted in the chat box. It looks like it is. Again, we will reconvene Monday, October nineteenth at one P.M. Um, can Chris, can you please read the information, the call-in number, please?
Yes, ma'am. Give me just one second. We pulled that back up. So the call-in information, uh, and also the information is already posted on the county's website, but the call-in information is again, it is number one, four oh eight, four one eight, nine three eight eight. Access code is one three two, nine nine five, three one, three three.
Thank you, Chris. Um, and again, it is posted on the St. Louis County website. Um, so with that, we will go ahead and recess again. So we will be back here Monday, the nineteenth at one P.M. Have a good weekend, everybody.
Thank you.